We are recording.
Okay, perfect. So it's at 7:03 PM. I'd like to call the October 26, 2020 Village Board Meeting to order again per the Governor's pandemic executive order. We are allowed to hold this meeting remotely. We're doing full remote today. Had a little bit of a health scare last week where I was quarantined for most of the week and wasn't sure I was going to be able to get out. And as this is a very important meeting, I wanted to be able to run this meeting and be involved. So I do appreciate you guys working with us, having this full remote today. I will say, I think we will be back in Village Hall for our next meeting and for our future meetings in that hybrid Zoom slash in-person scenario. So I know that it's nobody's preferred method to be on complete Zoom, but we don't really have much of an option at this point. So having said that, I would like to go ahead and get started with the meeting here and pull up the agenda and ask our clerk to call the roll.
Certainly. Trusty Guyer?
Here.
Trusty Spurling?
Here.
Trusty Lee?
Here.
Trusty Youngerman?
Here.
Trusty Marisak?
Here.
And Trusty Betsinger?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a quorum. We have all the board members here, all seven of us. So I'll move on to public participation. The first item is public comment. Two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Again, for tonight, because we are on Zoom, they had multiple avenues for addressing the board, either via calling into this meeting, emailing or calling Jeff Zofa with their comment, or attending the meeting in Village Hall. So Jeff, those last three options, the email, call, or at Village Hall, is there anybody wishing to make comment?
No, we did not receive any comments through those methods.
Okay. And then is there any, I can see that we have eight attendees that are joining the meeting. Would any of them like to make some public comment at this point? I think you can raise your hand.
Yeah, I was gonna say they would need to make.
Do they have that option to raise their hand?
They should. We have the question and answer options. They should be able to put in a question.
Okay. And is there anything in there?
Not seeing anything, no.
Okay. All right, just being thorough here. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on. There are no public comment this evening to item B, which is a presentation on Gray's Mill property. And with that, I would like our community development director, Rich Young, to give kind of an introduction to the group that's with us this evening. Rich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have Phil Cullen and Brian Dolan and their team on a proposal to look at development, redevelopment, I should say, of the Gray's Mill property. They have a detailed conceptual plan that was distributed to each of you board members this afternoon. So you should have that with you. They're going to go through a PowerPoint on what their plans are for the property and bring new life to our downtown. So with that, I'll turn it over to Phil and Brian and Joanne. Take it away.
Okay, I think I can just share the screen here. So bear with me a second.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we can see your screen now.
So I'm Phil Cullen. And to give you a little bit of background, you can still see me or not? No.
Yeah, Phil, we can still see you and we can see the PowerPoint.
Oh, good. Okay, so I'm Phil Cullen, and I own Bally Doyle in Downers Grove and Aurora. And tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Gray's Mill and what we'd like to kind of do in the in the future and kind of start a partnership between us and the Village of Montgomery. So about five years ago, Brian Dolan and myself, or Brian called me and said he had a spot that I might be interested in. And so I took, I originally took a look at the Gray's Mill. And at the time, we put an offer in and it was rejected. And the barbecue guy came in, the moon, whatever it is, the South Moon came in and they've occupied that space. But we were very interested in that at the time. And then, as soon as COVID hit, Brian, I think he was just in his office messing around or something. He ran across the listing again and called me and emailed me and called me. And I kind of just blew him off for maybe a month. But then finally, I decided to go in and just take a look at it. And as before, when I went in there, I just, I just loved the building. It's got, you know, it's got such great history behind it. And so, you know, Brian and I started thinking about, you know, doing something there. And then the day after, I got an email from Mike Baum. And Mike said, you know, Gray's Mill is available and I'm interested. And I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. I just looked at it yesterday and had met with the village and talked to him about different options. And so that's when Mike Baum got involved with the with the project. So let me tell you about who we are. So I am, I started Bally Doyle about 18 years ago. I've been in the food service business, you know, 30 some years and in the restaurant and bar business for 20 years. So I opened up Bally Doyle Irish Pub in Downers Grove. Then that was about 18 years ago. And then about eight years ago, I opened Bally Doyle Aurora. And a few years ago, we opened Empire Burgers in Brew, and that's in Naperville. That was just voted the best beer bar in Naperville, and it's been voted the best new restaurant. And by volume wise, it's one of the top one or two restaurants in Naperville. So it's very, very, very successful. And then we opened the Barrowman's Room, which is a barely cocktail lounge in Downers Grove. Of course, with COVID, it's a little too close. So it's still closed today. And nobody wants to drink cocktails outside, I guess. Then we opened up North Cot, which is a speakeasy, and that's part of the Empire area. And about two years ago, we expanded Bally Doyle in Aurora to add a secondary space in the top floor with about 5,000 square foot of event space. We call that Loft 28. And then more recently, about three months ago, we opened up a lower level at Bally Doyle called the Packard Room, and that holds about 300 people for special events. So that's kind of my background. That's, you know, what we do. And we have a lot, lot of, you know, good, solid operations right now. So our, our mission, really in all this, is to really provide a place where families can come, they can sit down, they can relax, they can have great food, they can have great drinks, great entertainment, and a great atmosphere, and just kind of enjoy themselves inside and outside. So the key players in the whole organization would be, of course, myself. And, you know, my background, I've been, I, you know, have opened and operated restaurants for about 20 years. I was past chairman for the Chamber. I was past chairman for Economic Development Commission. And then in the late 90s, I was Citizen of the Year. So I, I really am the kind of person who cares a lot about the community. And then Mike Baum, who's one of our partners, he actually lives in Montgomery. As a matter of fact, I mentioned this before, but his aunt actually lived in that house outside your Village Hall, the yellow house there. She actually lived there at one time. So his roots really go back a long time in the Montgomery area. And he's probably is, or he is for sure as passionate as I am about the building. And he, more from a family standpoint. And the cool thing about him is that, you know, he was a, he was the founder and operator of Baum Properties for 34 years. He just sold it. He's done very well for himself. And now he really has the wherewithal to give back to the community. And this is his way of, of doing something that nobody else really has the wherewith, you know, would have the wherewithal to do. And then I also have, about eight years ago, Joanne Buckley joined the company. And her background is special events. She had her own, has her own business. And she has a business where she sets up, like she set up the 19th hole tent at the Masters. And so it's, she's big time. What she came to me out of, out of nowhere, without any ad, and she said, you know, Phil, I really am bored with this business that I run. I'd like to get something that's got a little more excitement, little entrepreneurial, more entrepreneurial than what she had. And so she kind of does and has done this for the past eight years, just, you know, because she wants something to do and enjoys herself. So she's really, really good at it. So I kind of have a pro in her. But, you know, in Aurora, Montgomery, and Downers. So it's really good. And then Helen just joined us a couple of, about four weeks ago. And she comes from the Hilton Company. And I really brought her on because I needed an expert to actually handle, directly handle the business that we expect at, at the mill. So she's here just to handle the mill. And so she has 15 years of experience. And if you see her in action, she's another pro. And then I have Mike Kennedy and Jerry Jude are helping. Mike, Mike Kennedy has been with me since I've opened, and he's done every pub with me. And all the ideas and the thoughts that I have myself, he helps put it all together. And so we talk about a wall, and he says, we can do this, we could do that. And I say, well, let's do this, do that. And I come back two days later, and it's exactly the way I thought it would be. So it takes a unique person to say, you know, I want this place remodeled, but I want it to have the character of what it used to be. And that's what he's good at. And I do remember the first time when I hired some guys to do Bally Doyle, because I don't know if you've been there, but everything there is reclaimed 100%. That was 18 years ago. There were guys that would come in and want to scrape all the walls off and paint it fresh paint and seal it. And I said, no, no, I just want you to scrape the paint off a little bit and seal it. Because I want people to see and touch the old part of history. So we love our history. So the thing that, that I like and that I love about the mill is that, you know, when you walk up to it, it doesn't look that great. But to me, you look at the potential, you look at the bones, you look at the history. And I like to take things that people are throwing away, and I like to keep them and redo them. That's what I enjoy. And, you know, when I looked at, when we looked at Naperville, the before pictures of Naperville, it was abandoned for over three years. It went through a fire, and it ended up in a fire, or sheriff's, sheriff's auction for taxes, because nobody would, I think it was three or four years, it was set open, you know, open. But you can see on the left of the screen, there's, you know, that's the river view of what it used to be. And you look to the right, and that's what it is today. You look at the left down below, that's what the front looked like. And the right down below is what it looks like today. And, you know, somehow, you know, nobody else would tackle that business, and nobody else would take the chance. And we did, and I had said in the last meeting, every wall I tore down in that building, I, I found the problem would take six months to engineer again, and probably 60 grand. So by the end of it, you know, it was my wife and my two sons and, you know, all my friends, all my investors, everybody was helping pitch in to just get the thing open. But I knew once we opened, if we could get to that point, it would be a big success. And it really is. I mean, it's, it's a killer. So if you look at what you have now, you know, you pull up to the stop sign across from your Village Hall, and you look to the left, and this is really what you see today. You see, you know, the stairs that are creaky, the roof that's leaking and got holes in it, the paint that needs to be repainted, the driveway and all those things. And then you look to the right, and you see your tremendous Village Hall. And, you know, what I want to do is take that and make it, you know, relive, rebuild it, rebirth it, and make something that you can really be proud of. So when you come up, you notice that, and it'll stand up against what's across the street at the village. It's pretty rough stuff. So what we envision is keeping the Gray's Mill name and calling, calling it the Gray's Mill Estate. And what we would do is have five different concepts in there. The reason we need that is because it's a, it's a, it's a fairly big space. And by the time you put over a million into it, you know, you'd have to crank out some big numbers. And if you had one concept in there, it'd be very difficult. I mean, I understand why the barbecue place wouldn't make it. I mean, it's a big building. So what we've done is divided it up into five different businesses. And the first one is Foundry Hall. And that is, as you can see, it's on the first and the second level. And that will be an event and wedding space. And in phase one, it'll just be the first and second floor. And then phase two, we're going to build out an additional building in the back. So right now, out of the blocks, we'll be able to do one wedding every night. In the future, we'll be able to do two weddings every night, because we'll have one on the first floor and one on the second floor. And what I intend to do is really take the inside of, of the mill, keep all the character. So I'm going to keep all the beams, all the posts, because they're, I mean, they're tremendous. And then what we'll do is turn everything else white. We'll keep the floor as it is today. So we'll, basically, what, what the hot thing is today is to have more industrial, more earthy space, but modernize it. And that's what we'll do. And to me, I have a lot of respect for the history of Gray's Mill. And my intention isn't to destroy it. My intention is to enhance it. So when people come in for their weddings, they'll look at it and say, wow, I want, when they walk in the door, I want them to be blown away. And they say, wow, this is cool. And, you know, this is so historic. And that's, that's really what I want to try to do with this project. The lower level, we're going to call Danny Boys. And it's a neighborhood speakeasy and gaming parlor. And when I first opened Bally Doyle in Aurora, the first one person, key person that I met in Aurora was Dan Dolan, Sr. And from that point on, I was at every Christmas party he had, and I had Santa and his little helpers with me. Of course, that helped. And, you know, he was this very special guy. I know Brian Dolan for a long time as well. And it's really to his honors, to his tribute, that we're going to name the, the speakeasy after, after Dan, Sr. But it'll have some kind of a little secret entrance. It'll have that all cozy, nice little feeling down below. And then there'll be a whole line of specially vintage cocktails that are all handmade, and we'll focus on that. And we do a lot of handmade cocktails at Barrowman's Room in Downers Grove. And I actually age our cocktails 21 days in barrels. And so we have a twist there. And then at the North Cot Liquorette, we do this, we do high-end cocktails there. And here at Danny Boys, we're going to do something in between. But they'll all be handcrafted cocktails and things that you can't get down the street or across the street or five miles away, because I, I'm really into really good cocktails. And, and this will be part of it. And then the up top level, I don't know if any, any of you have been into that building, but it's really a spectacular space. And it's really a story and a half. And what we want to do is turn that into guest quarters. And the very, very top floor, or the fourth floor, I'll take out like the picture on the left, I'll take that out and have a loft area. And it'll be set up kind of like a, like a ski lodge, where you have four or five different rooms for the wedding party. You'll have one common area for, you know, the bathroom, one kitchen, one TV, you know, living room kind of area. So families can stay there together before and after the wedding. And then we'll also use it when we're not, you know, using it for the wedding, we'll Airbnb it. So it'll be a premium place that, you know, that's going to be a fun one for me to do, because it'll look, I mean, it'll look like those pictures. It'll be awesome. So that's our, our thinking in, in the loft area. Then we have Baum's Beer Garden. If you didn't know this, Mike Baum is German. And he and I get along because, and I said this before, he's a, he's 99% German and 1% Irish. And I'm 99% Irish, and he's 1%, and 1% German. So we have something in common. Somehow we get along. And we do like beer. And one of Mike's really hobbies is, if you've ever had his dried beef, or his beef jerky, it's fantastic. And so he really wants something to do. He had a great business. He's retired. And I think his wife's kicking him out of the house. And this is something that he can really have fun with. And he's gonna, we're going to provide a corner in the kitchen where he can smoke his own meat, stuff, stuff the sausages, and, you know, bring a little German to Montgomery. And with what's going across the street, you know, it might be a good combination. So Oktoberfest and all those things, we got the space to do it, and it'll be a lot of fun. Well, that's cool. And we'll have our own German beers there and all those kind of things. It'll be cool. Then, this is my little baby. On the bottom left screen, you'll see a little blue circle there. That's where I want to put the Riverside Cocktail Bar. And that'll be almost like a lighthouse or a second story viewing kind of thing. And I bought an old grain bin in Southern Illinois that's 36 round. So it'll fit right in that spot. It'll be a bar, maybe some indoor seating. It'll be more of an outdoor space where people can have cocktails. And they'll be able to either rent the whole lighthouse or the lookout, whatever, you know, whatever you consider it. But they'll be able to do that at the silo. And it just kind of uses that end of the property and gives us a little more flexibility when it comes to, to weddings. Because if a wedding party comes in, they can have their pre-cocktails in the silo, and then go over to Gray's Mill across the bridge and, and get married. So I can get, do a little drink before they get married. And then phase two comes into play. And I don't know how many of you have been to Empire in Naperville, but that has a retractable roof in the back. And I will tell you, that's the best money I've ever invested in a place, because it's paid itself in 100-fold. But the story behind that was when I was in Colorado, and I was younger, when I was 18, or actually, I was 21, 20, we went skiing with a bunch of guys. And we went to this restaurant, and the owner, as it was lightly snowing outside, he took a ladder, and he climbed up this ladder, and he had a window on the top roof. And he opened that window, and snow came in through that roof and down to the main bar. And I, and this is the truth, I turned to my buddies and said, someday, I will do something like that. And so that was my inspiration, you know, behind doing Empire, because it's got a hole between the first and second floor, and it snows all the way to the bar. And that's exactly what I wanted. So the Irish are very, very committed, we're determined, but we're a little slow. It took me 20 some years to do it. So actually, more than that. So anyway, the cool thing about the retractable roof is that it does two things. Number one, it gives us, each level now can have weddings. So when people arrive, they'll come out to the retractable roof area for cocktails and socializing. And then they'll go in to the mill itself, where they sit down for dinner. And they'll eat dinner, and then they'll come out to the retractable roof area and have live music or a DJ and, you know, dance their hearts away and have some cocktails at the bar there. So it kind of opens that up. And the other thing is, in the bottom level, then, we can have covered space that people can sit out and have drinks and, you know, order from the menu at Danny Boys. So it kind of expands our space a little bit from that standpoint, too. So we're also going to focus a lot on upgrading the outdoor spaces. You know, there's the entrance parking lot. We're going to do a little roundabout that's coming up right, yeah, there on the far top right. We'll do an entrance where it's more of a roundabout, so people can, you know, go in the circle and drop people off in the front of the, front of the mill. And then the actual overhang at the mill is going to be much beefier, it looks stronger, heavier. And then I want to put at the end of the little stream across from Village Hall, I want to put that water wheel and have a couple of, you know, pumps running water through it, and then a couple of park benches. So it becomes almost, I want that whole culvert to look like, basically like a city park. And so I want people to sit and enjoy themselves, take some pictures for the wedding, those kind of things. So we'll have that. We'll have a lot of fire pits around. We'll have new walls to divide the different areas. And then that bottom section where it's green and white, that's what the lower parking area is going to become. So we're going to set that up as more of a outdoor seating, and that they can then look up toward the river and have the ceremony up there with the river as a background.
Yeah, but the old spring.
Oh, yeah. So now let's take a look at the 3D renderings, because this will give you a better view of what everything is, you know, has, it comes together. So if you look at this view, it's from across the river. So you're looking across the river. And on the left, you see the silo. And then in the, along the river, there's all the outdoor seating there. And that'll go all the way up to behind the building. Then you'll see what I had talked about, the bricks and the artificial turf, that'll be through there. And then there's a connecting overhang from the speakeasy that takes you back to the lower patio area. And there'll be stairs to give you access up to the first and second floors. So when the wedding goers come, they can actually go down that sidewalkway and go up to the second or, or first or second floors, based on which wedding they're going to. And then the very back far right, that is where the beer garden is located. And this view is from the bridge. So you can clearly see the beer garden. We'll have a pergola there. If you look at the white building on the left-hand side of it, that's where the bar will be for the beer garden. We'll have an entrance coming off the existing patio. And then towards the front, we'll see that we'll have an entrance there to get into that area. And that'll be a mix of picnic tables and, and where the actual grease pit is, you have to put something like gravel over it, so it protects it. So we'll do something like that. And then you can clearly see the retractable roof from this side. And then this would be from the park. So that's the view from the park. So you can see the different components. You can mostly see the entrance. And basically, what we're doing is, on the addition on the left, the one that's yellow, partially yellow, that is going to be painted white and resited, or, you know, the siding's going to be fixed. And then we'll put a black metal roof on that. And then we'll put a black metal roof on the front entrance. And then the overall building itself will have a coarse or coordinated black shingle roof on that. And then the walkway in the back, which we'll see again later, that will have the metal roof, and so will the silo. So when you look at it, it'll be all tied together, because it'll have, the accents will be white. The actual building itself, we're not changing the color. That'll still be what it exists today. But everything else around it has that white, more updated look to it. And then this one is how you would see it from Village Hall. And if you look to the left there, you'll see the little circular drive. And it's not going to be exactly like that. It's whatever we can fit in. But earlier, then, you can see the little walkway, and that's going to have the black metal roof, and that leads from the speakeasy back to the lower. And that leads from the speakeasy back to the lower and upper patio decks. And then the front right, that's where I was talking about putting the water wheel with a couple of park benches. And so that whole strip, you know, once that's cleared out, I want, you know, grass in there and I want it cleaned out and, and I wanna do um, you know, the stone all along it. Riprap all along the side of that. So it really looks like beautiful place. That's my goal. So now let's, let's look at the costs and projections. So we'll do, you know, I'm a conservative guy. And so I kinda take all the different components and add them all together. So we'll do six eighty and end up being one four. Realistically, I think it'll be a lot more than that, but, you know, I like to under promise and over deliver. And uh, you know, what we try to do is, you know, Joanne, when she looked at, you know, what parties we have now at uh, at the loft and what she thinks we can do this coming year. And this coming year for, for,
for events are gonna be freaking outstanding because everybody's put all the weddings off.
So it'll be, I think, I think strong numbers. And then we're putting uh, over a million bucks into it. You know, from the guest quarters to the beer garden, to the rear addition and retractable roof. I mean, you know, none of that's cheap. It's, it's high-end stuff that's gonna really greatly improve the whole look of the building. What I see is, I see this kind of as being a partnership, you know, and I grew up in a small town. And you know, this is the center of your town and I know how important it is. And um, you know, from you, from our standpoint, what we're looking to, is really a partnership together. Together we rebuild Gray's Mill to what it used to be, put it back to its glories. But I need is really help with the building permits, both interior, the additions and the silo building. Now I need permits for all the signs that are, that'll be coming out. I'm, I, we, we're lucky enough to find the original Gray's Mill sign from some time ago. So we're gonna reposition that on the property, but we'll be adding a couple of more signs, one on the side of the building. And then one up front to kinda delineate the different locations. Then secondly, public areas, we're just gonna need some help to make sure that we do them right. And we need the permission to do that. And that means we wanna do some kind of, I know it'll involve the DNR, but um, you know, we wanna do some kind of a wall, to hold up the river wall a little bit. Limit the flooding. We know there's gonna be flooding no matter what. We wanna reduce that. And then we wanna clear out that whole creek and have the riprap. And then I had talked about that possible resting area with, with um, you know, with the paddle wheel too, the water wheel. And then uh, number three, I can't even see. Hold on. Oh, here we go. So licenses, we just basically need to have all the liquor license. If there's a banquet or catering license, we have to have that. The gaming license, of course, cause that's a big part of, you know, making the numbers work. And then indoor and outdoor live entertainment. And I just, and some, some villages require live entertainment uh, licenses, but uh, you know, eighteen years, that's what we've been doing at Ballydoyle and Downers Grove and Aurora. So I'm gonna continue doing a lot of things and more outside events here than I could up in Aurora. And number four, I know that you guys know the Army Corps of Engineers and you have a um, you know, kind of the ties, you know, and better than I do, but I know there might be some issues with, you know, along the waterways and, uh, you know, the silo. And I have some ideas of how to limit that because I did work with, the Army Corps of Engineers when we built Empire. Cause the back deck was an existing deck and it, it was hanging over the water. So I found out what I could and couldn't do. So that was a, good education, but a lot of times it helps. It helped when Naperville stepped in and say, you know, said, hey, this bad building's abandoned. Where here's, here's what we're trying to do. So that was helpful. Gave me a little more clout. And then number five is financial support. You know, I see this as kind of, you know, as a community project. And you know, we're looking to get the, you know, two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars in the first phase. And then phase two, when we start the back, we'd like to do another two hundred. Then we wa, like to work out some kind of a sales tax rebate. And um, you know, when we looked at this originally, we were just talking about doing the speakeasy. And painting the first and second levels and making it look really good. And we could make money doing that. Uh, but Mike Baum kept pushing us saying, you know, this building could be a lot more. And after his convincing, you know, talk and he finally, I finally said, you know what, let me just look at the numbers and, the last projections, I just put together everything I know we could do and do it right and make that thing, not only just a great place, but one of the best outdoor facilities really in the state. And that's, that's kinda on uh, the nudging from Mike Baum. So you can thank him for that. I'll spend his money. And then finally, we just need marketing support. You know, when we, it's gonna be a big event. It'll be a, a big turnaround. There'll be a lot of before and after pictures. There'll be videos. We just need to, to become partners with you and everything, you know, every message you put out. You gotta say, hey, guess what's coming to, to Gray's Mill, that kinda thing. And we're gonna put it back to its old glory. And then we're gonna do um, you know, for sure, we're gonna do, do a German fest. And we can do an Irish dance fest. We can do craft beer festivals. And one thing that we really have done a great job of in Aurora is fundraisers. And uh, that's, you know, something that I can do. We did the Aurora Strong when we had the shooting in Aurora. We raised, how much did we raise for that? Seven, seventy? Yeah, seventy grand for the firemen and the victims. Uh, St. Jude's, we raised over a hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, two fifty, yeah. And we do the same things for St. Baldricks. Rock the Heart. For Rush Foundation. So we, we do all those things. And what I was thinking as we get into this is, you know, maybe there's some organizations, you know, from the Boy Scouts to some local organizations that can help, you know, clean up the uh, culvert area and cut some trees down or help us build a water wheel. And in return, you know, once a year, we can have a big fundraiser for all your, charity of, you know, charity organizations in, in the new location and, have live music and raise, raise money is a return. So, but we've just been thinking about different ways to kinda put this whole thing together. So for myself and for Mike, um, you know, we don't really, it's not like we have to do this project. We want to do this project. And we want to do this project because when we walk and stand in the corner, we can see what it can be again. And uh, gives Mike something to do, gets him out of the house, which is important. And uh, but for me, it gives me, you know, I, what I enjoy doing is people, you know, is taking a, a, a location that nobody wants, that's gone. And giving it new life. And you know, I think together we can, we can do that at Gray's Mill. And uh, we're the people that can do it. So what questions do you have?
Uh, what kind of capacity would you think you would have for, for that wedding venue? Is that a two-hundred person wedding, a fifty-person wedding?
So starting when we have the first and second floor only, it'll be a hundred and twenty-five people.
Where's everybody gonna park?
They are going to park across the street. And then we have a, a right-of-way agreement or a parking agreement with, the VFW on the other side where the gravelled area is, that's where the secondary people will park.
So the valet numbers like for a wedding, it's about forty-two percent, forty-five percent of your total capacity is what they plan for cars. So for the valet service, if we have them for like a hundred and twenty-five people, or how they calculate their, the staffing and the need um, for parking, um, they usually say forty-five percent of whatever the, the group is. So even if we have a hundred and twenty-five person function, we wouldn't have a hundred and twenty-five cars that would come. It would be just slightly half of that would be.
I have a question if I may. Tom, are you finished?
Sure.
Um, I've, I've got two questions. First off, the, the easy question. Uh, of the five entities, is it five individual liquor licenses? Is it a liquor license and, gaming licenses for each individual entity? Are they separate? Or are they all under one umbrella where it's one particular license for the, the whole?
Um, well, I'm thinking it's gonna be under Gray's Mill Estates for the liquor license.
Okay.
And then I will have internally through RSI, which is our, you know, they do the accounting and all the daily sales and stuff. I'll have probably four different businesses within our company set up. So I can track, you know, I can track the speakeasy. I'll do the weddings. I'll track the, you know, the beer garden and I'll track the outdoor patio with the silo.
My second question is, I've, I've seen that lower parking area and where you would put Danny Boy's. Essentially with four or five feet of water in it at, at certain times. Um, and I understand the use of the Army Corps of Engineers because I've had to work with them in the past. What, what things can we do to help mitigate the river and, and, yes, there's always gonna be some flooding, but we don't want it to be catastrophic flooding like it was um, you know, in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, right. Well, a couple of things. First of all, what I installed in Aurora to help at least keep it out of the building is I have floodgates in Aurora. And uh, we've obviously, we've never had to use there, but I would put floodgates to at least keep it out of the building. But I really would need some help and some direction from the village, you know, can we burn up the outside? Can we, for sure that pump that's in the um, in the parking area, that's gonna have to be replaced. It's like a thirty, thirty-five hundred dollar unit. But that doesn't solve our problem. So we really need to find somebody that is a, you know, a water expert and do, if we're gonna do all this stuff, you're right. We need to make sure that we do the right things to keep it away from us. You know, maybe building up some of that's helpful. And it was suggested maybe adding four or five stones, you know, height, to that down, to that lower parking. And uh, so we just would need some help from you guys to kinda say, you know, maybe we could find somebody who's, a water expert that we can bring in and help us kinda go, you know, find a solution or options that we can utilize there. Cause that will be a problem. We'd like to use that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, the uh, can I, go ahead, Teresa.
Thanks Danny. Uh, why share a, a timeline with us for each entity, entity being up and running? What, what's your timeframe to, to get at least the first phase done? What are you looking at?
Well, what we wanna do is focus on getting the speakeasy open. And then the wedding venue, founder, Foundry Hall. Up and running as quickly as possible. So, so it's not a lot of physical change to the property in that respect. So it'll be a little faster. So we're thinking maybe four months to get that done. And as well as, you know, it depends upon permits, stuff like that and Army Corps and all those kinds of things. But while we're doing that, we can work on the other projects. And so my thinking is I'd like to, phase one, I would get the speakeasy open. And get all the walls painted and have it look nice and do some really nice outdoor, um, outdoor work for the landscaping. And then paint the yellow building white and get them replaced. And I'd like to pour the footings for the outdoor space. Um, you know, for the outdoor addition in the back. That's what I'd like to do. So maybe that's four to five months kinda thing. And then all along while we're doing that, we'll get the secondary phase two drawings up and running and, and you know, the, the, if you look at the actual physical construction, it's, it's basically a, a two-tiered deck. With poured concrete. And as soon as I pull the order for the retractable roof, they make it. It takes about eight weeks to make that. And uh, it takes about three days to install it. So it's a very, very quick. So it really depends upon how quickly I can get the steel and, and have my guy Mark put that together and, you know, so we're thinking, Joanne really wants us to have that whole thing done by the first part of June, but that's kinda pushing it. I would say by the end of summer, we should have, I would like to have phase two to.
Where's that, um, where's that rough manufacturer?
Uh, in um, northwest Indiana.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
But the, it's the same roof that we're put, that we put up at Empire. So if you wanna go see it, it's, it's really cool. But it's all aluminum and it's all engineered to be pretty, you can actually open it with one hand. It's pretty amazing.
Okay, can I go back to the river?
Sure.
Um, what happened in thirteen was the bank was too low. They did raise the bank up higher. But some of the water came in from the creek on both sides and filled that downstairs, uh, down lower. But once they put the bank up higher, which I think you got the idea with Army Corps Engineers as far as the, where the um, bank is having stone and things like that. I think that would stop a lot of your water. Um, the question on the girl that said you're gonna have forty-five cars for the one wedding is probably true. But then you said you were gonna have two weddings at the same time. So now you got a hundred cars. Uh, you're probably gonna be short of space. People can park by the park or, or whatever it is. But the history of the building, um, and I knew Jason as well. I was down there a lot. Um, his problem was his rent went up two thousand every year and he was paying ten, twelve, fourteen thousand a month. He said, well, don't worry Danny, I'm making thirty thousand on a weekend, having on two weddings. Fifteen thousand apiece from Naperville and Wheaton. These people will pay it. I said, great, but nobody has weddings in February, you understand? So you got a problem there. And to me, this looks like Jason's same idea. Wedding banquet, you can make big money on. The only thing I thought was coming was a restaurant. And this is not Ballydoyle. This is not, this is a wedding banquet, period, the end. The only thing that people in Montgomery can go to is the downstairs tap, which holds twenty-five, thirty people. And that place was busy when Jason had it. Friday, Saturday nights, Wednesday night, he brought a guy in to play the guitar. That was big. But other than that, yeah, fine. In, in June, you can have beer people out there or at your, or silo. But that's outside. Inside, like right now, if we wanted to go to a, a restaurant, the only place we could go to is your downstairs one, which doesn't cover a lot of people. I still don't understand what that, I guess, third and fourth floor is gonna be. You say it's for weddings. I've heard it's gonna be everything from a, um, airborne type thing or a bread and breakfast or, I like you to clarify that a little better. But it still seems like for the average person, and you'll get your weddings from Wheaton and Naperville that will pay that, fifteen, twenty thousand to come to your place. They love that place as far as the wood goes. I don't like it where you're painting so, a lot of that stuff white. Uh, the beams on, on the floor up in the second, third floor, you have as white. You got the floor not as wood anymore. Uh, this is a national registry building and an Illinois registry building. I don't have any idea who your architect is, but he should know that. Uh, our people really weren't really well aware of what, what kinda registry it was on. But it is on the national registry and you can't change everything on it. Uh, I don't mind the thing in the back, the glass. It really looks nice if the building stays. I don't mind the thing in the back, the glass. It really looks nice if the building stays the same and you said it would. And I agree with you, that yellow side, which used to be the pink cup. I don't know why they were painted yellow. It looks like. So, um, but you know, if you just answer that question for me, that third and fourth floor, I don't understand.
Sure. Well, let me, let me start at the bottom. So, um, the speakeasy, when you take fourteen hundred square feet, you subtract about two hundred for common area. And you've got twelve hundred square feet. So the actual capacity for, for that, when you put the tables together is probably closer to fifty people. And that's with a much smaller bar. The reason you had the lower capacity was the bar in that area was, it was way too big and it wasn't very functional. So what I found at the speakeasy in, um, at Empire and in Downers Grove is, you know, you easily get forty people in the meals, the food for that will be similar to what I serve at Empire. So it'll have hamburgers and chicken. It'll have. What's that? It'll have salads. It'll have, you know, limited menu, but it'll be great solid food that people will come in and have every day. And then the first floor, which is the floor you walk in out of the front, that will be a wedding venue. And the second floor will be a wedding, well, and for that wedding venue, it can be used for different things. Let's say that we have some big special event. Well, it can, it can move up from the speakeasy up to that first floor if we have something big going on. And for the, in the case of what we do at Empire is, you know, we seat that outdoor dining all the time. We have parties, we have funerals, we have corporate functions. And the reason, the reason I'm different than these other places and the reason I've been in business taking years is I really know the restaurant and bar business. I know what it takes to get people in. I know how to make money. I know how to, I build places that people like. That's what I do. And, you know, when you look at the, the first and second floor, my intention isn't to take away all its natural beauty. It's history. My intention is to take that history and embrace it and to make it look modern. And listen to me, I grew up updated. I grew up with a mom who had every room filled with antiques. I mean, that's, I grew up antiquing with her and she would, she would kill me if I painted all those posts yellow and the beams white. I mean, I wouldn't do that. So I'm going to keep all that character as much as possible. And then to explain too, that the lower level in the outdoor is really almost a four season room. Cause it'll be enclosed all the way around down below and then it'll have heat and air conditioning in that area. So it is going to be kind of an indoor, outdoor space that I fully expect like we have at Empire. If there's the people that want to come, the place will be packed. I mean, you go to Empire on a, not in this kind of conditions, but two weeks ago on a Friday night and that outdoor patio on the top was full and the downstairs patio that's semi-enclosed was full. That's because that's, that's what people want. So that's, I hope, did I answer, Denny, did he answer, answer those questions for you? Oh, you asked about the top floor too. So the top floor, it's not going to be rented all the time by the wedding goers. You know, that's, you know, if you get to a weekend, that's, you know, not enough to really make, make it pay. So we will Airbnb that and I have Airbnb properties that I do all the time and people are going to come. Never want to go, they're going to want to stay in downtown Montgomery and see that view on the river. I mean, that view from that top floor is spectacular. And I don't see any problems, you know, renting that anytime. But really it's meant for the, the bride and the grooms, the families, but those, those days in February where you don't have weddings. Then I've got, you know, the Airbnb, I have the speakeasy. I have the Riverside Cocktail Lounge. Then I have the lower area, uh, under the patio that, that, that'll all have business. And, you know, I also have, I'm going to have a lot of entertainment, my bands. I mean, like I had said before, for eighteen years I have bands because I love music and that's, that's part of my MO is to have music. Now at Empire, we have a once a month until we had COVID, obviously. We had open mic once a month or once a week. But in Downers Grove and Aurora, I have, you know, bands twice a week, open mic on Wednesdays and Irish music's on, on Sundays. So Danny, is that, is that the answer what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah. Um, Jason has such a nice arrangement with that first floor being a restaurant too. And I knew you'll have bands in Ballydoyle. I knew kids have played there. They're not kids, older guys. But I thought that's what would really draw a lot better than that. The weddings will draw. I told you, you'd make money on that, but you're going to help the Naperville Wheaton people. You're, you're not going to help the Montgomery people come in there to eat. And I thought that first floor, you should have kept it as a restaurant and the second and third, you could have made, you know, whatever you wanted, but, uh, I don't know. You're using an awful lot of space just for the weddings and like I say, you can't have weddings in certain times. And I know maybe on a Tuesday night, I don't know. You know, you'll have your fifty people downstairs because we had that many down there when, uh, when Jason was there. I mean, I had the state's attorney, uh, the sheriff of Kenda County, all of us went on there on Friday, Saturday night. But we ate buffalo steaks, things like that, not just hamburgers and we loved it. But again, he had such a high rent and he just could not make it, you know?
Oh yeah, I know. He did a great job. Well, you know, the, the first floor isn't always restricted. Like in Ballydoyle, we, the loft, we use it for many different events. And for specific Paramount shows, we open that whole area for dining. And so the whole building basically is full with, when Paramount shows are up and running. I mean, that's, that's what we're about. So the only thing we can't interfere with is, you know, if Joanne has a wedding booked on a Thursday or a Friday night, we can't, we can't overflow into that. But I can see that at some point, you know, if it doesn't conflict with what she already has scheduled, you know, we're flexible. We can move people upstairs to accommodate and probably when we first open, that's what's going to happen.
That's, that's exactly what he did is he had the first floor as a, uh, eating place for everybody. But on Friday night, when he had a wedding or something, he put a sign on the door, private party only. And that would stop. And that worked great for him, but at least he had people there on every night. Eating on the first floor and I just, uh, I love the bar. It's just a great bar, uh, no doubt about it. Just. And he had people, he had just had one guitarist downstairs and it worked out really nice. And he backed them on a Wednesday night. So I think you're very good on that.
Yeah. So I guess to your question or to answer your question, that first floor isn't weddings and when weddings only. And to be honest with you, it takes, takes some, some time to build up weddings. And so it's, it's going to be a flexible space as well as that top floor with the retractable roof. You know, that could, that could be a cool space too, that could be used for a lot of different reasons, birthday parties and everything else. And we, we do a lot of, we do a lot of reunions, class reunions. We do a lot of birthday parties. We do a lot of, uh, what are those bridal showers we do. Since we do tons of that, retirement parties, you know, fundraisers. I mean, if we did a fundraiser, that's not going just in that area. It's going a whole building and the outside. So.
Another question, Mr. Cullen, if you get a chance. Throughout your presentation, you mentioned a couple of times that you, you know, you want to make this a partnership and are looking for some additional assistance from the village. In addition to the, you know, the MDF funds, when we talked about the berm and, and Army Corps, um, the lower area. You referenced a couple of times, we need, you know, some help from the village. We'll need some help from the village or assistance with the village. You'd be a little more specific. Are you looking for Director Young's Rolodex or are we talking dollars? What, um, what, what are we talking about when, um, when you're referencing some additional assistance from the village with, with some of that mitigation issues around that property?
Well, I think one of it is, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers because it's easier to come as a village to those, those, to that organization and, you know, get the results you need. Uh, secondly is it's really more of a Rolodex issue. Hey, I, I have a, you know, I have a group of, of Boy Scouts that have, you know, they have to do a service project. So, you know, maybe they'll help us do the, the little culvert. And maybe you guys have somebody who's retired that wants to help build the little water wheel. You know, those kinds of things. I, I, cause I think this, I mean, you have the park across the street. You have Village Hall. And then I want you to really think of this Gray's Mill as your place too. And so you want to see it successful and any help that we can get from anybody in the community. That's kind of what I, I want more of that kind of involvement.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I'm excited for your project. I, I think that you know your business clearly. Revitalizing downtown would be tremendous for, for the village. Not exactly sold on the, the dollar amount of, of public assistance, but the, the project in and of itself, I, I think it's a fantastic. I hope nothing but success for you.
Okay. Yeah. To go back to the, to the amount, there's two approaches that we have for this to kind of understand it. Going into this, I was thinking we'd do it minimally and, you know, do a nice job of it and upgrade it. But if, if the village can help us a little bit more, I really think we could do a bang up job and do it all and make it really spectacular. I mean, that's kind of what we're looking to do. I'm, I really want you to, to a year from now, come back and say, wow, how spectacular is that? And, uh, people across the state are going to say, man, this is unbelievable in Montgomery. And it'll be a big destination for what people like. So it doesn't hurt to have people come in from Naperville and, you know, wherever else, Wheaton, they're everywhere else. I mean, that's all, it's all good. They spend money somewhere. They buy gas and they eat groceries and all those other kinds of things. Maybe they'll see something they love and come back again and again, again.
I would, I would love for them to come and have their weddings here. I don't, I don't care what town they're coming from. Come on down.
Yeah, same money.
I feel like this is going to be, as this word of mouth continues to grow, I think that there are going to be ancillary businesses and uses that are attracted to the village and specifically the downtown region. This has been a priority of the village board. Since I know that we've been, since we've been elected, you know, that we, we wanted to get, you know, one of the things, it, Montgomery didn't really have an identity. This starts to bring an identity to downtown Montgomery. And, uh, I would say in a couple of years, we're probably looking at a little boutique hotel or something down in the, in the Mill District. To, uh, to hopefully play off of the wedding venue. So no, I'm, I'm excited about this. Like, I think it was an outstanding presentation and I'm, I'm truly excited about this.
So hey, I, I did want to mention too, that, uh, you know, Virginia Potter was the architect who did her thing. In the past to that space. So we're kind of using some of her knowledge. You know, working with us to kind of make sure we preserve the historic part of it too, which I think is, is helpful too. But you know, hey, the good thing, it's a side note too, Steve, is that my parents growing up when I was ten bought a motel. I grew up in a motel. So man, I could do a great little boutique hotel someday too. That'd be a lot of fun.
Bring it. We're, we're ready.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board, Doug?
Uh, you know what? I think I'm excited about the whole project. Looking at it, I mean, again, Camille would, Danny said, I was thinking more restaurant type thing, but I see that there's food offerings. And again, like any good restaurateur and bar owner, I am certain you will respond as the community needs. And if you see a need to expand the menu, you will. Um, if you need to expand seating into that first floor area, you will. I think you can't put the cart before the horse and plan too far ahead. I spent sixteen years in the restaurant business myself. So, again, I think that you'll react accordingly to what the community's needs are as it, as it comes to the, uh, comes to fruition. But I'm excited for the whole project. Again, the financial impact to the village is significant. But again, I think at some point we need to make investment in our downtown to help kickstart and get some, um, some good things happening. So. Looking forward to it.
Awesome. I don't see Dan Guy. Are you on the call? Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, no, I, I think it's good. Um, when I was looking at the report, um, I had some, uh, some questions, a lot of concerns. But I think after the presentation, I, I feel a lot better about it. I, I think it's going to be a good thing for downtown. I'm just kind of sorry that I moved out of the downtown area and out west now because so much is developing down there. That's, that's walkable. I wish I would have stayed down in that area, but, uh, yeah, no, this is, this is good. It's exciting.
Well, Dan, we'll have a place for you to stay if you need it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted, I just wanted to make, uh, some comments, Mr. Cullen. I certainly appreciate your vision that you shared with us tonight, uh, for this facility. This has been something that's been on everybody's radar for decades. I mean, long before I was involved, uh, in the village to find, uh, somebody who was interested in, in creating this type of a destination location, you know, like, uh, Teresa, I think said, I don't so much care if you're hiring, um, having weddings for people that live in Montgomery or if they're from Naperville or Wisconsin or in, you know, in Indiana or Iowa. I don't care. Uh, the reality is we have something so beautiful down here in this historic Gray's Mill building, um, right alongside the river. And I, 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 I see the vision that you've laid out today and I sincerely appreciate that. And, you know, from where I sit, certainly would look forward to a partnership with you, uh, and your group for this site and what, what, what it looks like in the future. I do feel like we probably need to memorialize all of this into some, some sort of an agreement or, um, you know, approval, just so you lock in exactly what you're getting from the village, uh, and how we're going to aid. But yes, anything that we can do, uh, in relation to flooding, Army Corps, that kind of thing. I'll leave that to our engineers to, to figure out how we're going to look at that. But, uh, with that being said, it's all, uh, you know, positive on my end here. I know that there's, uh, nuts and bolts that we'll have to work through on certain things, but, um, I, I hope that you'll find that, uh, village staff will be, very responsive and, uh, perhaps, um, you know, very quick to respond to anything that you need in this effort. So. With that, if I'm leaving anything else out, um, you know, I know that you'd submitted, uh, in their request for two separate loans or grants, uh, for the two hundred thousand dollar each. You know, I'm curious to hear exactly, um, how the board feels about both of those. Um, I think if we build in to the agreement that one is sooner, the other one is, is a little bit later. I think that was your request.
Yes.
You know, if it's tied to, you know, certain improvements on the site, I mean, reality is, you know, fixing the roof on this site and elevators and all that kind of thing is really improving the value of that building for the future of our town. Um, and you know that we're very, um, tied to this building. I mean, it's in our logo. It is our most historic structure. Um, and this is going to outlive any of us here. So we want to make sure that anything we do on that site, um, is sustainable and, and kind of, uh, outlives all of us. So.
Right.
But would like to see, uh, kind of what the board members, uh, what your feeling is on the, the loan request. I know certainly not bound, uh, but if you're interested, you know, that's great. If you're not interested, I'm sure Mr. Cullen would love to hear, what you're thinking on that this evening.
Matt, I don't, I was, this is Doug. I just wanted, we have a process for that, right? With the MDF committee and we put a process in place.
Yep.
We jumping that process by getting board direction tonight before that committee even gets to the review process?
Well, uh, no, because I don't, we've never done two loans to the same site before. And so if you know right now that you're not interested, I think it would be, it would be great to convey that to them frankly. And so if you know right now that you're not interested, I think it would be it would be great to convey that to them, frankly. I suspect it's the opposite, that we need more information, but we're not opposed to it. But I certainly don't want to put that in anybody's mouth. So.
I think we're just looking if the committee brings forward two positive recommendations, you know, do you feel you could support that?
I'm interested.
I'm interested as well. I'm I'm a little concerned depending on how we structure that because we just put that process in place and it has a $200,000 cap on it. Now we're looking at two different ones. So how we structure that and how we present that will be important.
Yep. Teresa?
I'm open to this, to, you know, seeing what the requests look like and, you know, how everything is structured. But I'm I'm very excited for the project, and I would I would be interested in definitely learning more. I'm certainly not opposed to offering assistance. So I'm I'm open to it. Was that?
Denny? Yeah, perfect. Denny?
I don't have any problem with the two loans because it is two different identities. But I I do think Doug's right. We got to go through the procedure. And what happens if three, four years from now, all of a sudden he wants to do the silo? Is that money still going to be in there marked for development?
We'll figure that out. We'll get through. I see your point. We'll get through all the fine print on everything. And I and again, I'm Doug. I'm not trying to short short circuit the process here, but there have been multiple presentations we've got from, you know, business owners that come in where we say, we're probably not interested. And I just, you know, wanted to give that direction. If that was the case, I will say, wholeheartedly, I didn't think that would be our response from our board. But I'm hopeful that this is good information for Mr. Cullen and his group. So. Dan, what are your thoughts? Mr. Guyer?
Yes, no, I'm 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 fine with it. And I agree with everybody and their concerns and ours structuring and going through the committee and, you know, SM S MDF money we're going to use, and this is what it's been been earmarked for. So, no, I'm I'm very excited about it also.
Okay. And Tom, I know you stated a little bit of a question on that 400,000. If you wanted to go into it further, certainly give you that opportunity. Otherwise, it won't make you repeat it.
I I don't think we need to. I think you guys probably know where I I stand on that, given the last meeting and and my comment. But again, I'm excited for this project. I I think this could really be fantastic for for our village. I'm certainly not going to jump up and down about an investment in our downtown.
Thank you. All right. Anything else, Mr. Cullen, from you or your team this evening?
No, I just, you know, when I came into Downers Grove 20 20 years ago and said, I'm going to build a pub, nobody was down here, and they all said I'd never make it. They all said it was too big a space, and every restaurant before me had failed. And, you know, I turned a really deserted building in Downers Grove. And, you know, it's it's the top Irish pub, you know, seven years in a row. So I know how to do this, and I think I I just can't wait to get started because I think it's going to be unbelievable when it's all said and done. I'm going to do things I haven't had a chance to do that I really have always wanted to do. And, you know, same with Mike Vaughn. So I look forward to becoming partners and making this thing work out for all of us. I think it'll be a great thing when it's all done.
Agreed. And I'd be remiss if I didn't. I don't see Mike on this. I think he's in the
He's an attendee.
Down there without video. Yeah. So, Mike, I appreciate your your vision for the downtown. I know you've shared your vision with me in the past to do something incredible. And so I think this is that, and I certainly appreciate your help nudging this along. So it's it's good to good to see you again. So Rich, do you need anything else from us this evening?
No, I think we're good. We will move forward with the applications to the committee for review of the two grants and the phase grants, and we'll work towards a essentially a development agreement on what the different phases will be and what will be included ultimately on the redevelopment of the property. So we'll get those two fronts moving forward and onto the village board.
Great. Good. Thanks a lot for all your help, too.
The only thing I would like to add is that someone had mentioned that this project is going to outlast us all and outlive us all. And I I would say that's true, except for Denny. He's going to live forever.
No. I hope it gets it done so I can use it.
All right. Well, thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Brian.
Yes. And Brian, thanks for helping us as well.
You're welcome. Yeah, you know, I love that project. I love that property. And and this is going to be, this is going to be fun.
Absolutely. It's nice to see the the tip of the cap to your to your dad there as well. I certainly appreciate that.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, gentlemen. Have a good evening. Go enjoy some football. We're going to be here for a while. So.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I will move on to the business portion of the meeting. The consent agenda, there's three items. I'll read the three and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of October 12th. Accounts payable through October 23rd of 2020, and then ordinance 1893 granting a special use for outdoor storage with an alternative surface. This is central bus state sales or bus sales. And this is second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Penny, we call the call roll?
Yes. Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And Trustee Lee?
Yes.
All right, and I carry six zero. Thank you. Under items for separate action this evening, the first two A and B we'll talk about together and vote on those independently. We have recommendation of the ZBA of PC 2020-010. A variance to allow alternative surfaces within 250 feet of a public right of way into encroach 10 feet into an eastern side yard setback. This is also for central states bus sales. And then item B is ordinance 1895 granting said variance waiver first passage on the second. Director Young, do you have a summary?
Yes, real quickly, this is a cleanup item. Frankly, Mr. President, this item should have been tied to the special use, and it was not published correctly. So we had to bring this back because, as you might recall, when we were looking at the Michaels complex on Orchard Road, there was an alternative surface proposal that when we set up the ordinance to allow alternative surface, we set setbacks from the right of way to accommodate the storage yard at Michaels and to frankly have any entrance to a right of way from the ultimate storage area to be 250 feet in distance. So with that in mind, the alternative surface is required to be at least 250 feet from any right of way. The fact is, in this case, the right of way of Route 30 and also Pasadena Drive would fall within the 250 feet area that is needed for the storage of the buses. There is no entrance to the facility by way of either 30 or Pasadena Drive. So we're asking that this variance be approved because we believe that with the distance and no access to those individual right of ways, we do not create a problem with the the stone tracking on on truck tires and going into the right of way because there is no access to the right of way. The second component to the separation is the idea of dust mitigation within close proximity to the rights of way or other adjacent properties. We believe that the system that we have in place with a bond to ensure that there is dust control in the middle of the summer when it is in dry conditions, that we have the ability to take care of any potential dust concerns that might be in place. And that was something else that we put in the ordinance when we were looking at the Michaels facility. So we believe that any dust concerns could be mitigated by the the bond that was in place or will be in place for dust mitigation. We did have one resident on the south side of baseline residential unit that is on the south side of baseline over 550 feet from where the storage area would be or the alternative surface would be. Just voiced some concerns because they've experienced a lot of dust from their southern neighbor, which is the Keen Trucking operation. But that operation does not have the same type of stone material that would be in place here for a central bus. So we don't think that because of the distance to this alternative surface that it's going to be a problem. So and the commission agreed with that and recommended approval of the variance as requested.
Perfect. Any questions?
Also have, we also have, excuse me, we also have on the line John Tabor representing the developer and Doug Donaldson from Central Bus States, if you have any questions of the applicants.
Perfect. Thanks, Rich. Anybody from the board have questions for staff or the applicant on this item? All right. Hearing none. Thank you. Appreciate it. Would like to entertain a motion for to approve the ZBA recommendation. That's item A.
So moved.
To accept the, I move to accept the recommendation from the ZBA.
All right. So moved by Spurling, second by Guyer. Any any further discussion on the item? All right, Penny, we call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
And Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
I carry six zero. Thank you. Rolling right into item B, ordinance 1895 granting said variance waiver first passage on the second. If there isn't not any discussion, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, go ahead, Penny.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yeah.
And Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
All right, I carry six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, moving into item C this evening is the acceptance of a bid for the sale of property at 310 North River Street. Administrator Zoffel?
Thank you. If you'll recall at the last meeting, I opened and read the bid into the record. Subsequent to that, we sent the bid to all of you along with the plans that the bidder has for the property. It is staff's recommendation that the bid be accepted. And with that, I would answer any questions you have.
And just to be clear, the acceptance and award of bid.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this? I guess what is the, can you go through what the next? So we we vote to accept this this evening. What's the next step for that property?
So is that rich? Laura, do Laura, do you want to go through that?
Sure. So, yeah, after accepting and getting the bid, we would go forward with actually effectuating the sale of the property. And so we'd move forward on closing because currently it's obviously owned owned by the village. So they'd go through and we just go through the normal closing process. Property to new ownership.
And would that closing be tied to, you know, zoning approval, entitlement, anything like that? Or does that happen?
Typically, on the property before they, we'd have to go forward with the closing, and then they would apply for whatever they needed. There might be some agreements worked out in the interim with the village as part of that and so certain contingencies. But typically, we don't award or issue, you know, you can't really issue something to somebody that doesn't own the property.
Yeah, we would, Mr. President, we would move forward with the quick claim deed and the sale of the property as Laura outlined. And then almost simultaneously, we we would anticipate that they would be coming in for any special use approval as well as this is another case where we believe that there'd be an application for use of the Montgomery Development Funds for the Mill District.
And I'm sorry to expand on that. The village does retain certain reverter rights. So if for whatever reason, the project were to not meet the specifications that had been set forth in the bid, you know, if they were unable to meet the structure, you know, as either the square footage or the uses, you know, things that were put forth in the advertisement of bid. So for any reason that couldn't be met after they purchased the property, the village does have the right to come in and reclaim the property.
Got it. Okay. Any questions from the board or anything else from staff? All right, hearing none. This is item C, the acceptance of a bid for the sale of property. And what else did you add, Laura, just for clarification?
Award the bid to the one, the sole bidder.
Okay, an award of bid. All right. Is there a motion on item C?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, go ahead, Penny.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
And I carry six zero. Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't specifically, you know, thank the Worst Kitchen for their vision for the downtown as well. It's it's crazy to think that we've had these two kind of big picture projects come to the same board meeting after years upon years upon years of trying to find, you know, folks that are willing to invest. I mean, here we have, you know, the 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 Mr. Cullen and his group and what they've accomplished. But look at what the Worst Kitchen has accomplished over 125 years, I think it was, in the Aurora area and the following that they have, that they'd be looking to to bring people to our downtown, whether they're from Montgomery or Aurora, they're coming to our downtown. I think our existing downtown businesses should all be excited about this. So I really appreciate their investment in the community as well and look forward to that project moving forward this year, I guess, beginning part of next year. So.
If I could just say, it's it's really exciting to see this finally happen. And for many years, the village has had plans for what could take place with some mixed use development in the downtown. And it's really exciting to be a part of seeing that happen.
Absolutely. All right. Moving on to item D this evening is Resolution 2020-024 authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental recipient agreement for coronavirus relief funds with Kane County, Illinois. Director Van Vorn?
Thank you, President Bradley. In front of you tonight is the resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement. We have already turned in our application. Our application has already been approved. This is just the next step in the process. We have to have this intergovernmental agreement in place before we would be given any coronavirus relief funds. If there's any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Thank you. Anything? There a motion?
Hello? Second.
All right. And just for clarity, this is Resolution 2020-024. The intergovernmental agreement with Kane County. If there is no further discussion, I will have Penny call the roll.
President Bradley, was that Trustee Guyer, please, for the calling? President Bradley, was that Trustee Guyer please for, for the calling the motion?
Marisak.
Marisak, thank you. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That carries six zero. Appreciate it. The next two items, for various reasons, we're going to pull from the agenda this evening and bring those to a future meeting. So the item E, waiver of bid and purchase of a GMC 3500 of Kaufman truck sales. And then F is the 2021 landscape maintenance contract extension. So those will be on a future meeting. Is there any objection to tabling those?
No.
No.
Okay. I know it gets Mark off the hook from presenting, so. All right. With that, I'm going to move into items for discussion this evening. And as if the meeting was not exciting enough already, we got, we're going to get the full Freeman tonight. Honestly, I'm pretty excited about that. An update to the sustainable water supply planning, an overview, you know, EEI and, and the village have been working on, talking with the neighbors, you know, Oswego and Yorkville for some time on various issues. But we haven't really talked about this at our board level in some time. And so there's been some changes, some updates. I'm sure that Jeff's going to go into that. And I don't know if Pete, I should kick this off to you first, but I appreciate you guys joining us this evening and I'll sit back and listen.
Pete, I assume my doorbell's going to ring with the popcorn any minute now?
It's on its way, Doug.
All right.
All right. And I'm just going to turn it over to Jeff and let him get going.
Go Doug. Thank you very much. And yeah, my apologies if we were in person, I would have brought the popcorn just to confirm. Can everybody see the first slide in the presentation? Yes, we can. Awesome. So great to see everybody tonight. For those that I have not met, my name is Jeff Freeman. Some of you may have blocked me out of your mind for lengthy water presentations. But hopefully we've got enough information here that keeps you engaged through the discussion and is meant to be interactive. So if you have a burning question or comment throughout, please provide it then. At the end, we certainly have time for that as well. So a sustainable regulatory compliant and cost effective water supply is a foundational element for a successful community. The Village of Montgomery has a lot of really good things going for it, as evidenced by the earlier discussions this evening. The village currently is in a good position right now and likely has a couple decades before needing to switch to an alternative source supply. However, the science is clearly showing that the village's existing main water source, the deep sand sonocfor, cannot sustainably meet the village's long-term projected water demands. The village is wise in to continue to plan for sustainable water future, especially as opportunities arise. After all, we all know that the cost to implement an alternative water source will only increase. The village has three really good, long-term sustainable supply options for consideration right now, which we will generally, generally review as part of the presentation. So with that, I'm going to move on to the outline for the presentation. In order to get at the three alternatives really that are rising to the top for your consideration right now, we do need to go through some background information. So we're going to talk briefly about your existing water work system. And then next, we're going to talk about water sources within Northeast Illinois, which lays the groundwork for what are available to you. Next then, after talking about the options that are available to the Village of Montgomery right now, I will talk about potential next steps and where you might want to take things. And again, seeking your interaction on that and discussion, as well as any other questions and hopefully some answers for you. This is a, a map of the Village of Montgomery's water work system. The colors on the map are the different pressure zones throughout the community. And basically based on the elevation of the community, it has to be divided up into pressure zones, which will show you a cross section just to further demonstrate that. Throughout the water system, you have nine water wells that are scattered about. Four of them are shallow wells and then five of them are deep wells. The well, all of those wells go to one of three of the water treatment plants throughout the community. The ones in the central portion of the village go to the central lime softening plant. On the east side as well, eight, and on the west side as well as 14 and 15. You have a number of water storage facilities throughout town, mixture of elevated tanks and then a ground storage reservoir at the water treatment plant. And then there's also, in order to transfer water between the pressure zones, there'll be pumps that transfers the water out of the water main in one pressure zone and into the water main in the next pressure zone. All the pipes that you see in the different colors, of course, are the water mains that are below the surface. So again, in summary, you have nine active wells, four of them being shallow and then five of them being deep. Some of them are open to different aquifers, whether it be shallow or deep. The flow rate generally, your shallow wells are around 200 gallons per minute where your deep wells up can get up over 1,000. All of your deep wells have radium, hence the main reason or the main driver for treatment, either at the lime softening plant, which the pictures are of that or above, or at the cadine exchange water treatment plants that are below. The Village of Montgomery provides a very good water quality to its residents. Soft water comes out of both of the water treatment plants and of course, it's regulatory compliant. From a storage perspective, I guess you have the two underground ground storage tanks, as well as the four elevated water stank, water storage tanks throughout town. And then distribution perspective, the current pipes underneath the ground that provide that water, you know, ultimately out to the residences and businesses and institutions are four to 16 inch. The three pressure zones, like we talked about in the system, is controlled with a supervisory control and data acquisition system to be able to monitor throughout time. This is just a quick little overview of the, the pressure zones. So again, based on the elevation, the Fox River being the lowest point in the community. And then the elevated tanks generally set the pressure throughout those pressure zones, with your highest pressure zone being to the east with, within the Ogden Hill area. Okay, jumping into Northeast Illinois water sources. Within Northeast Illinois, there's generally four sources of supply that, that you or most people have the ability to tap into. Some are certainly far more cost effective than others. Shallow sand and gravel and deep sandstone, the upper two you already have. Lake Michigan and the Fox River are certainly two other options, which we'll go into as well. The map to the right, which if you remember our presentation, oh, about five years ago, or about three years, three to four years ago, we did show, but I think it's, it's good just to remind you of the different water sources and their geographical extent throughout Northeast Illinois. So the blue colored on that map is where Lake Michigan reaches. From Lake Michigan working west, obviously up in the north and going to the southwest. The inland surface water, which in Kane County would be the Fox River, is the green community and the upper portion of that, which is Elgin. And then down to the south would be the hashed, which is the inland surface water and groundwater, which is Aurora. And then there is one more down here on the Kane River, which is Wilmington. Then you get into the groundwater sources, the lighter orange is essentially the shallow groundwater as its primary source. And then the orange is the deep aquifer, the deep sandstone aquifer, of which again, five of your wells and your, your primary wells are within. The Illinois State Water Survey has taken data and they've determined that about 90 million gallons per day is being withdrawn from the deep aquifer. And if you look at the region as a whole, that's two times the sustainable yield of that aquifer because the region is pulling at a level where a rate higher than the sustainable yield water levels continue to decline within that aquifer. And they've actually been declining for over 100 years. Just quickly to comment, there have been some communities from when this map was created in 2015 by the Illinois State Water Survey. So there has been some more that have progressed towards Lake Michigan, up in the Lake County area as listed. And then Bartlett actually had switched off of deep wells and partially Elgin water to DuPage Water Commission. And then just to show you where Montgomery is, which you probably already knew, right in that general area. So most of the communities that are around you are in that deep aquifer. This is just a cutaway of the geology underneath Kane County generally and, you know, all the way to Lake Michigan, just to give you a sense of what we're talking about with these different aquifers. So starting from the surface, you would have basically the drift and some sand and gravel. And then you start to get into the bedrock formations. The first, what's called deep sandstone aquifer is the St. Peter aquifer, which you do have some wells that are open to that. And then below that is the Ironton Galesville sandstone, which tends to be your largest producing aquifer within the community. These are the two aquifers that are being pumped beyond its sustainable yield. There is one that's even deeper called the Mount Simon. But in the area around Montgomery, typically when you're withdrawing water from the Mount Simon, it's brackish. You're actually so far below sea level at that point that it's not really a usable source of water for you. Further to the south, this doesn't affect Montgomery much, but there is a sandwich fault that actually significantly affects the ability of communities down in the area, such as Joliet, to withdraw from the deep aquifer system. And then just to point out, you know, when wells were drilled into this aquifer originally in the late 1800s going into the 1900s, the water level actually rose all the way to the surface. Today, in some areas, the St. Peter sandstone is actually dewatered and it continues to decline down to the Ironton Galesville. So with that general overview, let's talk a little bit more about each one of these. The shallow sand and gravel aquifer, back when we did the master plan in 2015 and 2016, we looked closer to see, is there an area of the village where we could tap into more productive sand and gravel deposits? And we were trying to find either the St. Charles Bedrock Valley, if that could skirt through, or more likely the Aurora Bedrock Valley that goes into that. What we found through, which basically these pink colors is where the Aurora Bedrock Valley is. And it does not go through the Village of Montgomery. So insufficient sand and gravel deposits within the Montgomery area to really depend on that long term. You do have a couple, which is by the Fox River, but like I said, they're on the order of a couple hundred gallons per minute. Certainly not sustainable to meet your full demand. Get into the deep sandstone aquifer then. The deep sandstone aquifer, and if you just, you know, some of the names, Ironton Galesville, for instance, which are, you know, areas of, of Wisconsin, it's a multi-state aquifer. In fact, it touches seven states throughout the Midwest in the area of Montgomery. The first sandstone formation is about 700 feet deep. The Ironton Galesville, again, the main formation that you're pulling from is over 1,000 feet deep throughout the community. Those sandstones actually surface in some areas out west, actually west of the sandwich fault. By Wedron, for instance, you start to see the St. Peter. When you get up into Wisconsin, you actually can see the Ironton Galesville and portions of it. But in our area, it's quite deep. We are depending, we as in Montgomery are depending on recharge of that aquifer outside of the Montgomery area. When rain falls in Montgomery, because of the bedrock formations that are above it, it cannot get down to and replenish the St. Peter in Ironton Galesville. We're actually depending on rain, you know, towards Wisconsin, out towards Rockford, to find its way there and then migrate towards the village. The point being is when we continue with, to withdraw as a region above that sustainable yield, replenishing that water will take a long time for it to move through the aquifer. I'm going to go through an animation here just to reiterate, you know, how far the water levels have dropped over time, just starting in, in 1959. I guess here the state water survey had indicated that 150 years ago is when wells were starting to be drilled within the lower deep sandstone. At one time, DuPage County and even, you know, a good portion of Cook County was withdrawing from this aquifer. But they started to switch to Lake Michigan supply in the 80s and 90s. And when we go through the animation, you're going to see some recovery there. After that, you know, there was good recovery even into 2000s. But since 2000s and with the high growth rates within the kind of color areas where the deep aquifer is their primary source of water, continued decline occurred up to and continues today. So set this up here just to remember where Montgomery is on this map, in the southeast portion of Kane and northeast portion of Kendall County. And then we're going to advance the animation. So the, you know, main area where the water levels were low, you know, centered around Elmhurst through the 60s and 70s, there was a pretty good Kona depression down in the Joliet at that time as well. This is the sandwich fault that inhibits water to flow across it. You know, all of that's extending towards the Montgomery area into the 80s. And quickly here, we're going to see where DuPage County goes off of the deep aquifer. And now the water levels start to get higher as water can move into the area. Water levels are, are looking certainly better in the Montgomery area. But then through the higher amount of growth, we get back to having the Kona depression in, in the Joliet area, which continues to spread out. And then a second cone really has kind of developed around the Aurora, Montgomery, Oswego, Yorkville area as well. And then again, from 14 to today, that has just continued to decline. So just to give you a few snapshots of recent data, the Illinois State Water Survey has developed a regional model of this whole area. You know, all of the portion of it within Illinois. And then they can use that model to project out into the future based on different withdrawal scenarios. So the first map here is showing the area in 2020 up against the sandwich fault. The orange, the light orange is where there's a risk of declining well performance. As water levels go down, the performance of the wells typically go down and the overall production mount goes down. So you're kind of fighting a losing battle as those water levels continue to decline. By reference, just to show you where the communities are, so the Fox River is the blue line running through there. That's Montgomery on the northern end. And then your closest neighbors, which have been in discussions for subregional waterside planning, would be Oswego. And then Yorkville working down from there. If we fast forward to 2029, which if you have not heard, the city of Joliet is planning to switch off of the deep aquifer. They have 21 wells into this same aquifer, the deep sandstone aquifer, when they switch to a Lake Michigan source, which we'll get into in a little bit. This is what it would look like. And the darker brown is the risk of well inoperability. So at that point, wells within that general geographic area, there's a high level of risk that they would be de-watering. The aquifer to the point where wells would not be usable for them, hence the reason why they've established 2030. So here's where the communities are again with reference to that. After Joliet switches off of the aquifer, obviously that's a pretty decent amount of withdrawal on the order of probably about 15 million gallons per day, 15 to 16 from the aquifer in that area. There is some good news, but you can see that it really, from the orange perspective, doesn't affect much, if any at all, up in your area. So while some could think, well, maybe, you know, we'll get the relief that we need after that switch, it, it just really doesn't happen. And then if we fast forward from 2030 into 2035, just five more years, you're starting to actually see the brown come in up in that area, which, you know, wells in potentially the Oswego area and depending on how close Montgomery is, could start to see some serious issues or challenges to be able to continue to remain operational. So with that, let's go through the Lake Michigan a little bit. The Lake, Lake Michigan, we had the original exhibit that showed in blue, you know, how far extends. This one is just showing all the different, first of all, sources or intakes into Lake Michigan, which is the triangles along the lake, really all across. You know, there's several more of them running up on the north shore and then certainly when you get in. And then certainly when you get into Chicago, they just have their two here and here. And then when you get down into Indiana, at least it's providing supply currently to Illinois communities of this Hammond. But there's several more intakes into Lake Michigan down in this area as well. There are many suppliers of Lake Michigan water, city of Chicago being the largest, of course. And then they sell to either other communities directly or to water commissions and, uh, joint action water authorities throughout, uh, the area. So just to again, show you the reference, where's Montgomery out here, not too far from Lake Michigan water. Uh, but you also have to realize that, you know, while it's close by, you have to find a point of connection where there's capacity. From a Lake Michigan perspective, it seems like the main options that are available to the village of Montgomery would be the DuPage Water Commission, who's primarily serving within DuPage County. And then the other two would be through the city of Joliet. So the city of Joliet is evaluating two options right now. One is a direct connection with the city of Chicago Department of Water Management with a connection at 84th and Kedvale. And then bringing that down, which we'll go into a little bit more detail later, uh, that's not an existing pipe right now. It's being evaluated. And then the second option from Joliet would be an intake in the Hammond area. And then working generally around to get to the west, uh, to the city of Joliet. Okay, lastly, the fourth water supply option in northeast Illinois is the Fox River. Again, we talked about this about three, four years ago. Uh, it really is, is the only sustainable, uh, source of supply within currently within the Montgomery area. You know, Lake Michigan could be brought in, but within, you know, the current area, the Fox River is sustainable. Uh, we talked about this a lot in the past. The Illinois State Water Survey has developed a model to evaluate what water levels are going to do in the future, or at least project what they're going to do in the future. And the short story is, is the Illinois State Water Survey believes that water levels are going to continue to go up. And therefore there would be more base flow available, uh, for the village. And that there would be less times where you would be restricted from pulling or withdrawing from the Fox River, uh, for your source of supply. Tables to the right, uh, generally give some numbers to back that up. Uh, basically you, you would, there would be a low flow level that would be set by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. If the river flows below that level, then you would not be able to withdraw water from it. Therefore, a backup supply would be needed, which our suggestion in the past has been that you connect your wells, uh, to that treatment plant, such that you have that backup source supply. But the good news is, is that with the increase in base flow, the risk of dropping below that what's called Q710 level is lower, uh, to the point where it can be significantly lower based on timeframe. So September tends to actually be the lowest flow period of time in the Fox River. And based on the current conditions, when they did this in 2016, there was 4.7% chance that the wa- the levels would flow below that low flow restricted level, or the, the Q710 that's established on the river for now. In 2050, that would drop below 1% is what their projections suggest. And then as far as the duration of time where you wouldn't be able to pull from the Fox River based on those analyses for the four lowest drought years, uh, there's a significant reduction. Um, 2005 would be the most recent one at that time. If you use this, it would have been 50 days. Looking out to 2050, based on increased base flow would be 22 years. But remember, you know, it would be times if you go to the Fox River, not only from a quantity perspective to meet the low flow restriction, there could be quality situations as well, where you might want to supplement the Fox River with, uh, the deep aquifer. Therefore, the sooner you get off of the deep aquifer and don't withdraw, don't de- decrease those water levels, the more water would be available, uh, over time. So in summary, uh, when we look at, you know, all of these four sources for long-term sustainable supply for the village of Montgomery, we said shallow sand and gravel really is not an option. The deep sandstone aquifer, quite frankly, you've got some time, it would seem. But eventually you're gonna be there where you have to switch. And through the updated modeling, we would suggest, and, and we would look at this for you to try to establish that timeframe. If you would like to know it, in very rough terms, it's probably somewhere between 20 and 30 years. But we could get better detail to that. From a Lake Michigan perspective, you really have two options, uh, DuPage Water Commission or going to the city of Joliet. Uh, we're gonna talk about both of those in a little more detail. And from the Fox River perspective, when we evaluated this, uh, back a couple of years ago, we looked at going alone and bringing that water into the lime softening water treatment plant, or going with your friends to the south, which would be Yorkville in Oswego. Okay, so let's jump into the deep wells again, um, real quickly. Where's that timeframe? I already kind of hit the punchline here, thinking probably 20 to 30 years, uh, is a reasonable estimate. It could be a little bit longer, it could be a little bit less. It really just depends on who all is pulling from the aquifer and how much overall. I had mentioned from a regional perspective that we're pulling beyond the sustainable yield. State Water Survey has looked at more of a local level and certainly within Kane County. And then even probably worse in Will County is being, in Kendall County is pulled from above the sustainable yield as well. And then we already talked about the fact that if you switch, if Joliet switches off of the deep aquifer, it could extend some things out a little bit, but really it, it's not very measurable when you're talking about a long-term sustainable supply. The Fox River, again, just in summary, uh, you could do it on your own. Uh, utilize your own treatment system and transmission system, uh, but, you know, recognize what challenges might be part of that, uh, for a community of your size to be able to operate a system 24/7, uh, to be able to predict, you know, the water quality coming down the Fox River, uh, if regulations come up, trying to meet that on your own. Versus, you know, if you're looking at it from a subregional perspective, it seems like there's some economy of scales that make that a little bit more reasonable from a cost perspective, as well as all the other items that I mentioned. And then again, just to reiterate, you would need wells for the backup supply there. So when we did this plan, uh, back in 2016 and worked through this and presented it, uh, we showed you how the backup supply, generally the water treatment plant was targeted to be, of course, along the Fox River. If it was a subregional plan, uh, perhaps within the Orchard Road corridor, because it's kind of the center of all the communities when you consider those. And then we would connect the wells that are closest to that, the blue wells being Montgomery wells, red wells being Yorkville wells, and green wells being Oswego wells. Then, once we treat that water, which actually the treatment process would be pretty similar to the lime softening plant that you currently have, that water would be distributed back out to the communities, looking at the hydrograde lines, the pressure zones that we talked about. We need to pump that water to be able to meet those levels. So we had suggested delivery points, one to the village of Montgomery, one currently to Yorkville, uh, as many as three to Oswego, because they have different pressure zones in that area. And then a future one, uh, to Yorkville. Also, the thought process would be that you would have interconnects between your communities. So for instance, on the far east portion of Montgomery, one would think that you could connect to Oswego. And if you need water to come from that side of their, the distribution system, that you would be able to pull water out of Oswego's system too. Okay, so transitioning over to Lake Michigan options and getting more specific into the DuPage Water Commission. The subregional analysis was completed in, uh, really the lion's share of the work was completed in 2016 with final reports in 2017. Shortly after that, the Page Water Commission approached, you know, some, and, you know, eventually all three of the communities to suggest the option of connecting to their main transmission main and bringing a sing- single pipe down to provide Lake Michigan water to the region. So just a couple of background items related to the DuPage Water Commission. They are the second largest system in Illinois to provide water to, uh, that provides water, 800,000 people currently. Their capacity of their pump stations, 185 million gallons per day. Uh, and currently with their current levels of use, uh, they certainly have capacity to provide to other communities. There was 23 communities that band together to start with. And since then, uh, from the eighties to now, there's been six additional communities that have connected. They set up their contract with Chicago for 40 years. And essentially it was in 1984. So in 2024, that contract will be up. That's my understanding, they're currently in negotiations and discussions with Chicago. They aligned their member communities contracts on that same timeframe, uh, so that essentially all of them will be worked out together. From a governance perspective, it is water commission. There is some, there is some stark differences between water commissions, joint action water agencies, uh, um, uh, in other forms of governments for water boards, specifically for DuPage County. They actually did an overlay to an existing water commission statute to create specifically for them. And then from their board makeup, they have six commissioners that are elected by the mayors of the communities. So right now, you know, you have upwards of what, 29 communities that would elect six people to represent them. Uh, because it's a, a water commission under the county statute, there's six board members that are appointed by the county board chairman. And then there's also a chairman of the water commission who's appointed by the county board. So essentially 13 board members for DuPage Water Commission. And each board member has a six-year term, staggered terms, uh, for reasons I'm sure you're well aware of being on a village board. This is what the pipe transmission main network looks like. The point of connection, so if you just imagine DuPage County, they have a nice ring transmission main that runs around, all the way around the county. The point of connection that they're recommending is on the west side of Naperville at the intersection of 75th and Book Road. Uh, from that point, uh, the largest pipe is this 48-inch pipe that would come down and then start branching off. So there's a connection, for instance, here to the Ogden Hill area of Montgomery. A large diameter main that continues down kind of on the southeast portion of Oswego for a delivery point there. Uh, there's a delivery, the first delivery point to Yorkville down, uh, here. Uh, in their high zone area there, uh, Rain Tree Village is the name of that subdivision. This is basically Orchard Road, so there would be a spine coming up Orchard Road for a second connection to Yorkville. Uh, the Oswego connection would be at the tower that you see, uh, just north of the railroad tracks along Orchard Road. And then your section connection in Montgomery would be generally along Lena Road extended to the east of Orchard. Uh, seems to be a good location. So from these two delivery points, then that water would be pumped into your distribution system. There would need to be distribution system improvements to be able to transfer the water east and west of these locations, uh, which we had evaluated as part of the subregional analysis. Okay, so moving off of the DuPage Water Commission, again, any of this is up for discussion at any point, but certainly I can pull back slides when we get to the end, if, if you want to ask at that time. Moving on to the city of Joliet, Lake Michigan options, uh, like I had mentioned, they have the Chicago Department of Water Management, as well as the new Indiana intake. Uh, what has happened is, is they've suggested that their form of governance be a water commission. More than likely, it would be yet another overlay on the current statutes to set up a water commission that seems to fit this region. Uh, the main thing being that they're looking at having proportional votes. So right now with DuPage Water Commission, for instance, they have the, you know, 12 board members plus the chairman. Board members, one person, one vote, uh, and things are passed in that manner. Uh, generally overall, in the Joliet area, there's a suggestion that the voting rights would be distributed based on your water use. So a community that has larger to a lot larger water use would have a higher number of votes versus communities that maybe a community of a thousand people would, um, on certain items have less of a vote. That would be defined as more information comes out. So within this Joliet process, which started in 2018, and they started with 14 different alternatives. And then that got winnowed down to five alternatives in 2018. And then we're down to the two alternatives, Lake Michigan alternatives. They've engaged all of their neighbors. And specifically within 2020, there was 18 communities or utilities that were contacted by a team, um, of folks from Joliet. Uh, one of the guys you might be familiar with, Pete Wallers, actually heads up, uh, that discussion with Joliet staff and has been meeting not only with your staff and Mayor Brawley, uh, but the other 17 communities throughout the area is identified in colors on the map. Uh, the other thing to point out is, is through this whole system, there would be a transmission main network to get to Joliet. There would be a transmission main network in the vicinity of Joliet. But then eventually there would be subregions set up. And the way that the, this overall system sets up is, is that Oswego, Yorkville, Montgomery would be their own subregion. And really it seems in order for this to work, uh, the three of you would probably, and be cost effective, the three of you would work together to have a transmission main extension from the Joliet area up into your particular subregion. Here's the general map of, uh, the new Indiana intake. So the city of Joliet, uh, team has been under discussions with, uh, the city of Hammond, as well as Whiting and Gary and a number of other communities in, uh, Indiana there to identify locations where an intake could be put in place. And then, uh, if it was to come from the Hammond area, it would generally require 47 miles of pipe to bring that raw Lake Michigan water to the southeast corner of Joliet where a water treatment plant would be located. Uh, the water would be treated to the appropriate regulatory levels and aesthetic levels. And then that water would be distributed into Joliet as well as an overall commission main that then can be distributed to the member communities within that commission. The second alternative, like I mentioned, going to the city of Chicago. Uh, there's the Southwest Pump Station from the city of Chicago. There's a tunnel that comes from the water treatment plant, uh, out to this area. There would be an extension of that tunnel and then a new pump station that would be installed along with 30 miles of transmission main to get down to the Joliet area. For that, from a timeframe perspective, uh, the, this is a slide that's taken directly from the city of Joliet. So I got exactly what they're proposing. Uh, basically in 2020, the plan is to take the two alternatives, cost estimates, full analysis, a full considerations to the city council workshop in November. Uh, the middle of November, there will be a workshop, it's already been established. And then December, there'll be a public forum that takes place on, uh, the, the second and third, uh, to get public input. They have had public input on previous iterations back in 18 and 19 as well. Assuming that the city makes the decision in either December or first part of 2021, then the project would go into immediate preliminary design. One of the main driving points for the city of, of Joliet project is of course funding. And they're looking at getting a loan, uh, through the, what's called the WIFIA program. And through that program, the timeline has been established that they'll have a 30% design of that system by the end of 2021. So that drives being able to understand which communities want to jump in with them and join this regional water supply system, water commission, and have established essentially decisions by the end of December 2021, if you're gonna go with Joliet. Again, because they need to understand who's going to be participating to size that system and come up with the cost distributions. Uh, from there, then it would go into final design, uh, 22 to 24. It may extend a little bit depending on the facilities, but the plan is to have construction done by, uh, the end of 2029 or rolling into 2030 and making that transition. So what are some potential next steps for you? You, you understand, you know, what your three alternatives are right now, three sustainable alternatives. You know, one thing is, is water demands have changed even over the last three, four years. Uh, not only from just what is used, but how we looked into the future. When we were doing the master plan originally, When we were doing the master plan originally, we only had twenty forty population projections from CMAP, so we did our best to take your annual growth rates and push that out to twenty fifty. Uh, shortly after the master plan was done, CMAP came out with new twenty fifty numbers. We took those numbers and essentially reevaluated your water demands, which are shown on the graph to the right here. Uh, as you may be aware, the village of Oswego is going through a study right now to evaluate their alternatives. They are looking at the potential of connecting, you know, Joliet's system to Oswego as well as the subregion here with you in Yorkville. Uh, they're also updating the numbers for the Fox River system and updating the numbers for the DuPage Water Commission system so that there can be that apples-to-apples comparison. So they asked for updated water demands. We went ahead and worked with your staff to establish what they are or what the new projections are for uh, the twenty fifty, um, average day demand, which is the dark blue here, uh, which they did change, you know, for Oswego and Yorkville. Uh, for you guys, that ended up being the average of the current trends and less resource intensive, and then your maximum day demand, uh, which quite frankly is the more pertinent one for sizing water systems, but looking at five point five-three, which again is some fairly consistent with what your previous demands are, but pretty significantly different for Oswego and Yorkville as their population projections by CMAP for twenty fifty were significantly lower than were previously estimated. So what about those deep wells? You know, what is that timeframe? Again, you know, it's a very complex system. It's multi-state system. It's thousands of feet below ground. Uh, we just have points here and there to identify what's going on with that aquifer. Things can change pretty considerably even within a couple thousand feet away in the aquifer. But based on the best available data, you can come up with hydrographs like this that identify what the non-pumping water level is and then what the pumping water level could be. And how close are we gonna get for that pumping water level to the top of the Ironton Galesville? In this simulation, uh, basically in twenty thirty, you know, Joliet goes off of the aquifer. Uh, so there is some level of recovery in that, but even before twenty fifty, you're starting to get back down to those levels. And that will vary between the five deep wells that you have. Uh, most likely, you know, instead of pumping a thousand gallons per minute, they'll be down to nine hundred and eight hundred. So again, you're fighting that losing battle and the timeframe is probably within that twenty to thirty years. So one of the biggest issues we see for you guys as far as, you know, how, how are we gonna do this? How are we really gonna compare these to come up with an apples-to-apples cost comparison? Right now you've got some apples and oranges. You have cost estimates for your Fox River system that were done in two thousand sixteen. You have cost estimates for your DuPage Water Commission option that were done in two thousand eighteen. And here we are in two thousand twenty with the Joliet project being costed out in twenty twenty dollars. So really, the other two need to be pushed forward, uh, to twenty twenty so that they're all on the same plane. And we can get that true apples-to-apples comparison. But you also have to remember that it's more than just the capital cost when you're looking at cost. It's the, you know, operation and maintenance cost, which can be combined with the capital cost to come up with present value. You could find that one alternative is higher in capital cost, but if it's, you know, a non-purposed purchased water system, so you don't have to pay anybody to pull out of the Fox River. But you do have to pay the DuPage Water Commission, who pays the city of Chicago, uh, to get water from Lake Michigan. So you need to factor in that purchased water along with the capital cost, normalize it to see what the true cost difference is between all three alternatives. One way of doing that is looking at the fifty-year total cost of water. The other option is looking at your typical residential water bill between the three options that would factor in, you know, that overall total cost. But then is cost the only thing that really needs to compete, be considered? Most likely not. I mean, it could ultimately be the most important, but that's really gonna depend to you as to what else you might wanna consider. And I would think even within your board, there would be some people that perhaps hold sustainability and, and water quantity a little bit higher in consideration, or ultimate water quality might be consistent with, with costs and, you know, might there be a difference between the different supply sources? How about control and governance? If you are doing it, which is two neighbors, you have a certain level of control. If you go to the DuPage Water Commission, you have upwards of thirty municipalities that are represented by a twelve to thirteen member board. If you go to Joliet, then it's probably somewhere in between as far as the level of control and governance you have. And then what's the risk of implementation, uh, to be able to construct these facilities? As well as long-term, you know, continuing to be able to meet recommendations. And we have some tools that we could certainly help you, uh, to come up and evaluate those different items to, you know, see which one rises to the top for yourself and then ultimately for the community. So with that, uh, I open it up for any questions. I believe the intent tonight really was to have an open discussion, so I'll do my best to answer as many as I can.
I got one quick question, uh, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, if Joliet leaves and then Oswego and Yorkville leaves, can, by then, I noticed in nineteen ninety till two thousand, we had the water level go back up to where it was fine. With those three big cities, especially Joliet leaving, would we be all right until twenty eighty before this happens where we're gonna need water?
That's something that, you know, I think we could look at as far as a simulation goes with the state water surveys model. You know, if you wanted us to. The one thing, um, do you also need to recognize though is, is a couple of the other communities closest by to you are in the deep aquifer. And there are a decent amount of withdrawals. For instance, even though the city of Aurora's primary source of supply is the Fox River, they actually withdraw a decent amount from the deep aquifer as well. So based on your proximity to Aurora, um, you have that other, you know, potential cone of depression that would have to be evaluated. So, you know, is it up to twenty eighty? I mean, it could be. I, I don't know based on the model, but that's something we could look at. My guess is, or educated guess, using engineering judgment at this point and working with the model, as I doubt it would be that long. Uh, trustee Lee, uh, it would be less than that.
Okay, second question real quick is if, um, in around two thousand one, Naperville and all them went with Michigan water. They found out that Chicago controls the cost because it's coming out of Chicago, so they bump it down to their expenses down to the Naperville. Uh, in other words, they don't really control the cost. Chicago does. How would this work with us?
It's definitely a consideration. I mean, that's where getting at that control and, and governance. You know, I would think you would wanna have a certain level of, of confidence uh, in that, uh, there have been times in the past where the city of Chicago water rates have gone up considerably. Uh, of recent times, over the last, say, three to five years, uh, they've been more moderate, uh, overall. Um, but, I mean, you know, you have to look at perhaps what they're trying to do with their system and funding overall. Uh, one of the benefits potentially of jumping in with a larger water commission that is essentially negotiating the contracts with the city of Chicago. You know, they want customers too. They, they wanna sell water. And if they continue to go down the path of, you know, very large water rate increases, uh, then that could ultimately be a problem, but that, that is a consideration them versus say, for instance, a Joliet option as to, uh, control over rates.
I, thank you. I, I agree with Denny. One of my concerns is if we do Joliet or if we do Chicago, either option, if we're talking about a, a bureau or a water commission and someone from either Yorkville, Montgomery, or Oswego is not on it, it, it's essentially taxation without representation. They can say, Chicago can say, oh, we, we've got a budget shortfall this year. You know, because of COVID, we got hit hard. We're gonna raise our water rates and they're just gonna pass that down. And also what happens if, say, these pipes are coming through Naperville or whatever or some municipality? And there's some development that Naperville or whoever wants to do or and what hap- there's the potential for us to be cut off from our water supply. And I don't like that. I don't, I don't know any commission or anything out of Chicago that hasn't been corrupt. And I don't see that changing in the near future. Um, I don't wanna be, and I don't want the village to be in a position where we are essentially being taxed without representation. Uh, that, that's ridiculous to me.
Yeah. And Steve, just, I guess, one comment that I would make there is DuPage Water Commission made it very uh, clear that we would be a customer that they would sell water to. Uh, so we wouldn't have representation on their board. Think of it like the KenCom situation that I know that we weren't too happy about, um, at the time, but the reality is we would be a paying customer. Um, they would sell water to us. The deal with Joliet would hopefully be different, uh, in that we would, uh, that would maybe give us some more control as being a voting member on that commission, however they shake that out. When we met with them, that was one of my concerns is that we, it would be a tough sell with, with this board here and with Montgomery, with, uh, Oswego and Yorkville to join a system that is essentially the same, uh, setup as DuPage Water Commission where we're committing long-term to buy water as a customer with, without being involved in the management of that operation at all. Um, and so they've sort of agreed to that, you know, with, what Jeff had said. Um, certain parameters on, uh, some of the votes and that kind of thing. But again, it hasn't been determined yet, but yes, I, I understand what you're saying. And I, I'm gonna jump in on, I'm sure what Pete or Jeff were gonna comment on. I have very little concern that we would be cut off from our water supply, um, on a pipeline. Is that, Jeff and Pete, are you as confident there?
Yeah, once they commit to delivering water to you, that, that, that's an obligation. So there's no way that they're gonna divert water to other sources. You'd have a contract and they would honor that contract.
And this pipeline, the Jawa likely would have, uh, either an easement or exclusive easement, the right to have that pipe there forever, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah.
And one thing to, I'll just keep in mind that, um, I think as these communities renegotiate their agreements with city of Chicago, they have been putting escalator caps in uh, to the agreement so that they're limited either to the CPI or, um, uh, or to, um, some highest amount like five percent or whatever, so that there can't be those significant increases of fifteen percent which occurred several years ago.
If I heard correctly when Mr. Freeman was speaking, by the way, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the presentation. There's eighteen people and your vote is likely weighted by your water consumption. And of the eighteen, because I didn't, I know Oswego, Yorkville, us and who the others are and what their consumption's like, we're clearly the lowest end of the Oswego, Yorkville, Montgomery. What, what do we look like in the big pond of the eighteen people?
Pete, you could probably talk to that a little bit better.
Yeah, of the, of the eighteen entities that we talked to, Doug, I don't think that all eighteen are going to go into the, uh, Joliet Commission. The advantage that you have going into it, um, you have a pretty significant, um, population and water demand initially. So I think your representation will be pretty strong. Over a period of time, uh, others may, you know, use more water than you, but initially you would have, I, I think, um, pretty strong representation. Um, the, the idea of this, um, commission of, commission form of government and proportional representation was discussed with the city council at, at Joliet and they were in favor of that. They understood that people wanna say in their, in their water supply. And, but they also, you have to appreciate that, you know, they have a, a significant investment and they wanna be fairly represented as well. So I think it's, it would be a fair system. Um, but it will be proportional, but they're also providing for what they call supermajority votes. So on items of significant impact, it wouldn't just be, um, like the Joliet contingent couldn't just, uh, pass anything. They would need additional votes from other commission members to pass significant items like a rate increase or anything that was, was significant. Now, none of those details have been, uh, completely worked out yet. Those will be developed in the next year, uh, but certainly before you would be asked to commit. Uh, those, those will be developed and it's in our intent to go back to all the communities we talked to and to send out, um, proposed bylaws, if you will, to get comment and then go from there and kind of negotiate, but, um, so it's too early to say what, how, you know, significant of an impact you would be in the, in this newly formed Joliet Commission. But, um, I don't think it'll be eighteen communities.
And one, and the other thing is that there are safeguards being put in place that sounds like to protect, and I agree. If we're only using, you know, ten percent of the water, we certainly should not have an equal vote as somebody who's forty percent of the water, because that's just, isn't that, what's right is right. Um, I'm glad to see that there's some thought process going into it. The other advantage to getting in now is we're getting in on the ground floor. Kinda like Matt's comment about the change or the ten pound is we weren't one of the initial members. We were getting a little bit late here. We would be one of the initial members, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. All right, any other questions, uh, for Pete or Jeff? I'm kinda losing my, uh, my ears here, but.
No, I'm good. Again, thank you, Jeff, for your, for your patience.
Ben, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, if it weren't for you, we would have to be watching football right now. So I sincerely appreciate that.
I got up and hit the record button after you said that about the game being on. I forgot.
Right? Um, so I did wanna talk a little bit, um, big picture as to why we're, we're having this conversation right now. I think it's abundantly clear that the Joliet project is um, kinda pushing us a little bit for, further along in our decision-making than we might otherwise be. But if we wanted to fully vet that as an option, now is our time. If we, if we are not interested, um, you know, then we don't need to do anything. Uh, but I would propose that we, so, and maybe Jeff or Pete can jump in on this, but, um, Oswego has hired a consultant to look at that Joliet option as it relates to Oswego, but also the group as a whole. Uh, there are some aspects of that that, that do work for Montgomery that we, um, can see some benefit from. And there are some things outside of the scope of that that I would like to have EEI, um, update. Um, so that, so that way, next year, we can make a decision, um, as to where we wanna go, although we don't need to pull the trigger on anything else. Um, you know, for some time after that, but I, I definitely don't wanna miss the opportunity, uh, the Joliet opportunity because we're not prepared. I mean, we're, we're in much better shape than maybe some other communities that haven't studied this in the last four years. Um, so I think that'll be something that we'll be bringing back, uh, for the board's consideration at a future meeting is, um, is an update from EEI on certain portions of this, uh, and to, um, to jump on board to the Oswego study. Um, because again, I, we need to be in on this now, um, and uh, and so it's a little bit more funding on our side, uh, to, to fund this, but we gotta fully vet the option, finalize our report, and then we can make a decision. Any thoughts? All right. Well, uh, hearing none, that's perfect. We will, um, be talking more, a lot more about this over the last, uh, over the next decade. Um, and certainly into two thousand twenty-one. So thanks, Jeff, Pete. Certainly appreciate it. And, uh, we'll be in touch.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Yeah, thanks for your help. All right, um, you know, moving on, so we have items for discussion. We have, uh, three more items and I, they're not gonna be terribly short, honestly. So what I'd like to do is take five minutes, uh, get up, walk around, refill your water, and we'll reconvene uh, at nine thirty-seven. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
All right. Um, rock and roll. We're recording?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and call back, uh, the meeting to order and we'll roll into our, uh, our second item for discussion this evening, which our second item for discussion this evening, which is B, the Montgomery overflow floodplain improvements feasibility study, and this is a draft. And Pete, we give the intro here or directly throw it directly to Tim?
Yeah, I'm going to let Tim do this presentation. So we've talked about it in general in the TIF two transportation study. We wanted to get in more detail tonight and go through it. So with that, I'll let Tim go through the presentation.
Okay, thanks, Pete. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Thanks for the opportunity to be here, especially to follow Jeff Freeman's presentation. Appreciate that. So we're going to talk about the Montgomery overflow floodplain improvement feasibility study. We've been working on this for some time. We started in 2017 with the TIF. And then our analysis, we did quite a bit of analysis, finished up in 2018, looking at basin options. And, you know, some things we'll talk about. And then we started working, looking at properties to move forward with the basin options. And then this year, as we started to move forward on that in more earnestness, we developed another option for the regional detention basin and then have completed some of the preliminary work. And as a result of that, we have this study. The other impetus to move this forward was the TIF two transportation study that Pete presented last month to the village board. So you'll see also how these two studies tie together. So with that, just a quick outline, talk about the goals for this project. A couple of definitions that'll help explain some of the floodplain and stormwater terms that we're going to be using. Look, look over the project area for the TIF and for this study, discuss some of the analysis that we did. And then some of the projects that we're hoping to move forward out of this, some of the preliminary work that that we've already done to move this forward and then some recommendations and and next steps to how to move this forward in conjunction with the with the TIF district and the TIF two transportation projects that we've already talked about. So the project goals for this, two main goals. First, to create the development opportunity and provide infrastructure within the TIF area to support development. And second, in hand in hand with that is to improve the drainage and floodplain management within the floodplain area of the Montgomery overflow that runs through the TIF area. Without improvement of that area, then we're not able to create the economic development that we want to with the TIF area. So this is an exhibit you've seen before from the previous presentation. This is the yellow area is the TIF two project area for reference. And we'll be looking at the overflow area, which is on the southwestern edge of the or side of the TIF area. So the overflow study area is like I said, on this this area between Orchard and Route 30, the Montgomery overflow, which I know over the years, we've talked about quite a bit. Just for brief background, Blackberry Creek and extreme events are, you know, large events, it will overflow out of Jericho Lake. And then those flood flows, a significant flooding event flows out over Orchard Road, Ockit Road, blocked by Route 30 and then goes to the east and it works its way to the Fox River. A couple of things to note, the current drainage, the local drainage for that area is provided by an existing drain tile. The green line on this exhibit. That is in a state of disrepair in many locations and is not fully functional. This tile also provides the outfall for the the existing detention areas for United facilities. That's why they often have problems with drawdown of their basins. When Kane County redid Orchard Road several years years ago, they added five large box culverts under Orchard Road to convey and pass the Montgomery overflow event under Orchard Road without Orchard Road being overtopped. And that's why, as Pete pointed out in the transportation study, we would be looking at a similar setup on Ockit Road to make sure Ockit Road is passable during large flooding events. And then also at the south end, there is a need to improve the the drainage underneath Route 30 to get it to some existing storm sewer systems that we'll we'll talk about in a little bit. So that's the study area we looked at where we want to provide these drainage improvements that will provide some opportunity for economic development within this part of the TIF area. Couple of quick definitions as we're going to talk about them. For this analysis, there's floodplain and floodway. The floodplain areas is that part of the floodplain that can be modified, filled, modified for development. The floodway area is the area that has to be preserved for flood flow. So we can't encroach on that area. We can reclaim some of the floodplain area. Compensatory storage is then the required volume for any fill that you place in a floodplain area. So if you fill an area of floodplain above the floodplain, so it can be developed and you have to provide compensatory storage for that within the adjacent floodplain area. And then detention storage is the other component of floodplain and stormwater management, and that's the required stormwater storage volume for development of a property. When you develop property and increase the impervious areas, the ordinances require that you provide detention volume to offset the impact of that development. So in this feasibility analysis, I'll just kind of go through the different levels of analysis we did analysis we did to kind of arrive at where we're at today. So first, we looked at a property analysis of the properties within the the TIF area that have potential for development or increased development opportunity with this project. So we estimated the floodplain area and volume on each of the properties. And then we estimated that we did that using existing data, the GIS data and the available topography from Kane County. Then we estimated the compensatory storage requirements that would be required to fill that floodplain area and reclaim it for development. And then for each property, we also estimated the detention requirements. If that property were to develop, how much detention would be required for that development? Then we looked at regional basin analysis, looking at locations where we could put a regional basin along the overflow route and some calculations on how much volume we could expect to obtain at each of those locations that we looked at. And then we did a cost analysis for each of the regional basin options and combined options, including the conveyance of stormwater and floodplain water to the basins and conveyance and the outfall for the basins. And then we did the economic development analysis for we set up a formula for, you know, determining the what we've called the value created for a development parcel. And there's a there's one detailed example in the draft report that was submitted with the board packet. But in essence, this is what it is. We look at the value, we would assign a value to the development area that could be recovered from the floodplain. So when we, you know, if we filled an acre of floodplain area to allow it to develop, then there's a, you know, a value of that land that can be developed. So we would take the, you know, for each property, for a property, take the area you reclaim, assign a value to that. And then there's also a value for the development area recovered with offsite detention. So normally in developments, you might be dedicating 25% of your property area to detention storage. So if you could provide that detention storage offsite, then you have an additional, you have that area, land area that you can also develop. And there's a value to that land. And then there's the value of the not having to construct the detention on your site. So those are value that can be created with a regional basin for property. And then there's also against that, there's a cost to provide the regional detention improvements. So there's, you know, a cost associated with our storm sewer improvements and constructing the regional the regional basins. And so if a, you know, given development requires a certain amount of storage, a certain percentage of the a certain percentage of the storage in the regional basin, we provide, assign a proportional cost of the regional basin to that property. And then to offset those costs, there's also consideration of TIF increment dedicated to regional improvement. So if a property develops, then it begins to provide increment, you know, tax dollars to the TIF district that the village can use on projects and some of that could be dedicated to these regional detention improvements, which would then offset some of the cost of the of the regional detention improvements to a development parcel. And so when you combine those values and those costs together, you end up with a value created for development parcel. So we developed this formula. There's the example in the report. We could discuss or if you have any questions on this at the end of the presentation, we can go. I could try to answer those, but that was the essence of that first analysis we created in in 2018. And then moving on to the the basin and the projects, this is an exhibit you might recognize from last month. The TIF two transportation study identified projects and number one is the floodplain and drainage improvements. And that's, you know, we're talking about a little more detail tonight. There's a range of estimated costs depending on the phasing of the project, how much of the how much regional detention you need. And, you know, how it's phased in. And one, the first bullet here is is an important point is that these drainage improvements, they support economic development by providing a safe outlet for the stormwater flows. Because currently there's not really an effective outfall from that area with just the drain tile and a culvert under Route 30 providing the outfall. So in even the even without reclaiming floodplain land, even without offsite detention, that impacts the ability to develop those properties in the TIF area. So this improvement provides for the opportunity to develop those properties to their fullest potential. In addition to providing the potential to reclaim property with offsite detention and floodplain storage to support further economic development. And then, as I mentioned, the the basin size would be dependent on the number of potential users and, you know, that would impact the cost, how big of a regional basin we use or we develop. And then the stormwater detention needs and and floodplain comp storage needs for Ockit Road. There will be some floodplain storage needed to offset constructing Ockit Road with the additional culverts. And then there's detention required per the ordinance, and that would also be able to be provided in the regional detention improvements. So this is the overview of where we're looking at for the improvements and for the regional detention basin locations. We have three options identified. In our original analysis, we were looking at option one and option two with combined, they would provide enough storage for what we saw as the potential development requirements. And as we did some more investigation on the proper, excuse me, on the properties this this year, we also identified another option three closer to Ockit Road, which might be a good location for a first phase to allow the Ockit Road improvements and some, you know, some development activity could later be expanded or combined with the other options if more storage is needed. And then we also locate the potential storm sewer improvements. Like I mentioned, south of Route 30, you have to have a storm sewer to convey from Route 30 to the existing storm sewer in Pasadena Drive. It was constructed with the intent of extending it to Route 30 to pick up that water. That last section was just not able to be completed by Kane County when they put in that storm sewer. And then we would have storm sewer improvements to the north as well for conveyance. And the scope of that would depend on how you phase the basins and which which option, you know, where the regional basin is located. Some of the storm sewer would be routed, could be routed through the regional basin. But ultimately, you're looking at taking going up to Ockit Road so that you can, you know, take the the storm water from potential development on the north side of of Ockit Road and and have the opportunity to get some improvement up to United Facilities as well. And this then on this close up exhibit, we also show some of the areas or the areas that we identified for potential development areas where we could use this regional basin to provide storage to enhance the development opportunity. So in some cases, like the northeast corner of Orchard and Ockat, you have, you know, an area of floodplain that could be reclaimed to make a larger development parcel. Other areas like south of Greenfield on the west end, there's a property that essentially has no real development opportunity now, but you could reclaim that portion of the property that's floodplain and not floodway. As this is a number or letter F. And then there's other properties like along Ockat Ockat Road where you could potentially provide benefit to existing users by enabling them enabling them to reclaim some of the floodplain land and expand operations on existing parcels. This is a blow up and with of the table that was on the previous exhibit. So what we we did here for each of those potential development properties, we calculated required comp storage and detention storage in acre feet. We're showing the area of land that could be recovered between both floodplain recovery and moving detention offsite. We also are showing, you know, the needs for the potential Mulberry extension and for Ockat Road detention and comp storage. And then we have, you know, a total maximum, what we're looking at for the amount of storage that might be required. And then on the other side of the equation, the storage volume that we could create with the regional basin options. So looking at option one and two that we had identified in 2018, that option gave just over, you know, 80 acre feet, which was enough, or 86 acre feet, which was enough for the the total requirement that we were looking for for a fully developed project. And then option three, which we've further identified as possibly a first phase. It has the advantage of being close to Ockat Road to provide, you know, that storage for Ockat Road. It has advantages being, you know, a phase that could be started, which would give you enough for the road improvements and kickstart some development opportunity. But if you were looking at some of the larger parcels like parcel B at the northeast corner of Orchard and Ockat, you know, you would you would need more detention with that or, you know, storage with that. And then you would be looking at a combination with option three and two. This just gives an overview of how we would look at some of the analysis we would look at when we try to determine, you know, what bear and what size the first phase of a regional basin would want to be. We did, this year, we've also done some preliminary work. We've identified that soils were potentially a problem would impact the cost of construction and the suitability of the of the areas we were looking at. So the village did go ahead and do the soils and geotechnical investigation this summer. The summary is generally suitable soils were on site. So when we do a basin excavation, that material could be used for fill on adjacent projects like the Mulberry Lane Extension or fill and floodplain on adjacent parcels to recover that area. There is still some unsuitable material that will, you know, account for in in the cost estimates, some material that might have to be buried in the ponds or moved offsite. But generally, it's suitable for our purposes. And then with regard to the storm sewer, the storms, the south storm sewer, which is no matter what level of improvement we we want to do, we need, we need that storm. which is no matter what level of improvement we we want to do, we need, we need that storm sewer to provide the safe outfall. And so we did, we were able to obtain an easement for that storm sewer from Route 30 to the Pasadena subdivision storm sewer. And then a quick overview of possible, you know, next steps and recommendations. We would want to discuss project phasing and sequencing in conjunction with this study and with the TIFT two transportation study projects. We would look at basin phasing, what is the cost of the different options versus the storage and potential TIF benefit? You know, what realistically for the develop, potential development parcels, what's ready to move and what timeframe? So we could identify a first phase and size and location for the detention basins. And then look at confirming project sequencing and moving some projects forward. Some of the the key items we'd be looking at would be that South Storm Sewer. With that easement, we could go ahead and move with construction of that in the near future. We would need a final well and delineation. And then we want to look at improvements to the North Storm Sewer, North of 30 in conjunction with drain tile repairs, depending on the phasing and location of the detention basin. We may use the repair the existing drain tile to provide some level of drainage until future improvements are made. And then looking at how to phase in and sequence the regional detention basin improvements. And at that point, we would finalize this study. And hopefully be able to move some of these projects forward. So I hope I didn't rush through that too much. I know it's getting late, but I, you know, want to take some time to talk about it. And certainly, both Pete and I are able to answer any questions you might have. And Pete, if I missed anything key, please feel free to jump in. I'm no Jeff Freeman, so I might need some help.
Don't cut yourself short. You did a great job. Thank you.
All right, so this is the draft report that we're seeing tonight. I mean, what, I guess, what is the timeline for those next steps in determining exactly which projects have the most benefit to move forward now?
I think some of that is going to depend on some other decisions that are made this evening in terms of timing. We have time and we have, but I think there are some things that we're going to want to take action on. One is to discuss, you know, what we're gonna, what parcels we might want to acquire. That's really the the big issue that we we really need to talk about.
All right. Any questions of Pete or Tim kind of on the draft study at this point? All right. Good job, Tim. He stumped everyone.
Right. I don't know if that was my goal, but that's all right.
No, it's all right. I'm sure we'll be talking about it again soon, so.
Yes, I believe we will. Thank you very much.
All right, Tim. Good to see you. All right, if there's no other comments on that, then I will move on to our next item for discussion. Is the snow removal and ice control plan revisions? Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Browley. So I have saved you from a PowerPoint presentation tonight, mostly due to the fact that our snow and ice operations haven't changed much over the course of the last few years. We've really just got one provision in here this year that we're adding to our operations plan, and I'll get into that. But I did want to touch on a couple of key things, which first of all, is typically something that we've already covered by this point in time, which is our salt procurement. We typically, the village, we get our salt through the IDOT CMS program. This year, the village did receive our pricing back, which we were pleasantly surprised by those costs. We haven't received an official contract back from CMS yet, but they did give us the numbers, which was great for us to give us an idea budget wise what we're looking at this year. To give you guys a point of reference, last year, the village was paying $96.25 a ton. This year, we've been able to procure our salt at $46.51 a ton. So dramatic decrease in in pricing. Believe to be relative to the fact that last year we had a mild winter and large stockpiles of salt are left over. So thinking that that may play a factor, but either way, we're in good shape as far as salt goes. We're at about maximum capacity right now from last year's purchasing. So we're in a good position. We prepared 100% would be 1,200 tons. We always, of course, have the 80-120 split. We're able to take 80%, as little as 80% and as much as 120%. So we'll evaluate as winter goes on, but the good news is that budgeting and funding wise, we're above average for salt. Brining is another operation that we've continued to do over the years. So just to touch base on that, we'll continue to utilize our intergovernmental agreement with the village Las Vegas. And part of trading our services of buying the brine is part of getting brine materials from them. So that's something that, again, we look forward to do, helps us reduce staffing time, pre-events, and also which then translates into reduced overtime hours. So something that's a benefit benefit to the village and we're trying to continue doing. Staffing, that's one of the big big improvements that we've made over the last few years. This year, as you see in your packet, if you happen to look at last year's, you'll see one of the significant differences is the ability to pull our supervisory people out of dedicated routes truly put them into a position where they can supervise and run a snow command, either mobilely from a truck and or from the public works facility. So that's a huge improvement. We anticipate that to benefit us also in instances where we get into day to day operations outside of the overtime hours of plowing and where we have other obligations such as customer service and jewelry locates and things of that nature. So we're, we're highly anticipating that to be a big benefit for us. So appreciate us always the board allowing us to to gain staff and and put us in a position where we can service the residents better. On that same note, the same thank you goes out as far as equipment goes. We've been able to increase our fleet and our capabilities of fighting snow and ice events majorly referencing the additional wing plow units that we purchased over the last two years, as well as a few pushbox plows that we've been able to utilize for, specifically for village parking lots, which make it much easier for our staff to effectively clean those surfaces and get our job done faster. So again, thank you for allowing us to to continue to update our fleet and put us in a good position. Another addition is going back to staffing is is our maintenance. Having the ability to add a second mechanic this year has been a huge benefit. One thing, the note was today, obviously, we had some snowflakes flying early this morning. And we were confident in the fact that we had all of our equipment 100% ready to go. So a huge kudos to Pat and Sam, our Fleet Division employees, for their preparedness. They start on that equipment early so that we are prepared for these types of events. It seems as the years go on, we did events earlier and earlier in October. So very important for us to be prepared and be ready. And again, having the additional staff definitely helps us do that. Routes, there's really no changes to the major routes, but the one significant change that we do have does pertain to this, which would be an additional alternate cul-de-sac route. Again, as I pointed out, that's mostly due to the fact that we are able to look at performing this route due to the fact that we have additional staff. And so one thing to note on there as well is we've removed the two fleet mechanic positions from our normal operations of snow and ice fighting. So that way, what we're looking at doing is if we have the ability to bring those staff members in, they'll be our last resort to bring in if they're not needed for fleet operations. And then they'll be able to run those cul-de-sac routes, which in turn makes a huge difference for our staff, reducing the amount of time that they're spending on cul-de-sacs that take a long time. Every cul-de-sac is configured differently and takes a long time for, especially the larger trucks to maneuver and navigate through those. So we feel that that'll be a huge benefit as well. But again, we're putting that in there as an alternate. That'll be up to the decision of the supervisor on staff at the time to decide whether or not it's wood wild or adequate to do that, those routes. So that'll be a change this year, and we look forward to seeing how that works. And then also kind of making changes to that in the future to make it the best that it can be. In closing, obviously, our goals every year is to provide safe passage for the motoring public and therefore also pedestrians traveling to and from village facilities, so sidewalks and parking lots as well. And so we hope that this year will be non-eventful, honestly, on our part. But again, we're confident in the fact that we're prepared and that we have the tools to provide that safe passage for those motoring public and pedestrians as well. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time, but otherwise, that's all I have.
I just have a comment. Jeff Soffel, can we make sure that the information on the plowing routes and all that are on our Facebook page and on the website? And perhaps the link could be in the newsletter that goes out. I know once we start to have snow on the ground, I start to get contacted by different residents from different areas of the town. And that, you know, they're always, well, they didn't come on my street or they didn't do my cul-de-sac or anything like that. I think it's really helpful if the residents have access where they can kind of look at that and see what's going on.
Certainly. We'll make sure that the plan is up on our website and we'll link to it in our social media.
Thank you.
Anything else from Mark? All right. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are moving on, our last item for discussion this evening is the Public Works Facility Planning Discussion. Administrator Soffel, you got an intro here?
Certainly. And we like to save our light, easy items for the end, so. This is the follow up on the discussion we had at the October 12th meeting. At that time, staff and consultants consultants presented the space needs study to you, which included a proposed size of the building, some preliminary cost ranges, some phasing options, and a review of our current and future debt levels as a result of this project. We wanted to continue that discussion tonight, let you know what we have done since that meeting. One of the big things we've done is work on a timeline, which was included in your board packet. We worked with the architects and the bond consultants to try and lay out a timeline and to put down the major decision points for all of you. The major decision points out there we'd be looking at is one to authorize us to proceed with the next phase of this project, which would be, you know, doing building plans and construction documents, authorizing to issue bonds to pay for the project. We'll have selection of a construction manager in there to to manage this project. Approval of the bids to go out for construction and then approval of those bids when they come in of the contracts. Obviously, the biggest decision you'll have, which we would like to discuss tonight, is, you know, if you want to move forward, which I think everybody does, and if so, what do we construct now? And what do we do as a future phase? To try and help with that discussion, you know, staff looked at, you know, the space needs study you're provided with. And basically, the consultants broke the project into a base project, which is what we need to build now for our current staff and for the next 10 to 15 years. And then they included three alternate bids in there. The first alternate was to provide some covered parking, not fully enclosed, but covered parking for vehicles that don't need to be inside, but to give them some some protection from the elements, help extend their lives. Alternate bid number two was construction of the second part of the fully enclosed indoor garage space. That would be estimated to meet our needs through 2050. And then alternate three was construction of some material storage bins and a concrete slab right on to get stored outside. For the base project and all the alternates, the consultants provided a range, they gave a low cost and a high cost. You know, staff wants to be good stewards of the village's money and be cost conscious, but also build something that's going to hold up and last over time. So trying to, you know, strike that balance, we took the average of the low and the high cost for our cost estimate. And you can see in the memo for the base project that comes out to about 12.3 million. Alternate one, about 1.4, 2.4 for alternate two, about 430,000 for alternate three. For a total of about 16.6 million. You know, then we had to look at what bond council provided us for what we could generate in bonds that we could afford to to repay over time. And the amount that we would get for this project would be about 15.2 million, which is not sufficient on its own to construct the whole project as we just laid out at 16.6. Staff tried to look through then kind of prioritize and see what is most important. Obviously, the base project, because that's what we need now. As we looked at it, we felt building the second part of the indoor garage space would be something good to do do now. And if we did the material storage bins, those three items would fit into our 15.2 million. What we'd be leaving out then was the additional covered but not enclosed garage space. If we build alternate to the enclosed garage space, we wouldn't need all that space now. So those items that we would have under that covered space could be in that indoor garage space for quite a while. And then slowly, they, some of them would be phased outside. And at that time, we could look at doing that covered garage space. But we feel that really provides Public Works with the most, you know, things they need most now and provide them for quite a while into the future. And really, what we're hoping for tonight was to get some feedback now that you've had a couple of weeks since the presentation, to look through the information and think about it, to just get some feedback from you on your thoughts on the project and to try and answer any questions you might have after going through it. Mark and Justin and I would try and do that. With that, I would open it up to to all of you. All right, we're going to build it all.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Jeff. Questions, thoughts from the board?
I like the plan they presented, base project, alternate bid two and three.
My question, I have a question related to how much space do we need for vehicles now? The amount of vehicles that we have currently, because adding that second, so bid two puts us out to 2050. But yet base project puts us out 10 to 15 years. I'm just questioning another 16% of the budget to go towards building covered space. Do we need it? How much, how many vehicles are we going to be leaving outside if we don't build that?
So that's something I would have to look at our building plan and the parking space plan that they put together to give you that exact number, Doug. But one of the things that we want to take into consideration too is that we're currently short on vehicles as far as public works goes, both small and large vehicles. There's also some other vehicles and equipment that we'd like to add over time, such as a tractor truck. So things of that nature are things that we're proposing and planning. And we went into the space for the base. We put those in as well to make sure that we had adequate space for those. So, you know, I I agree with you that we're looking long term to 2050 when we look at that alternate two. But the big factor too that we look at is, and I think everyone can attest to this, you build a shed or a garage and you look at it and say, oh, my God, it's huge and whatever, use that space. Short time goes by and it's full. That seems to be the case in everything we do. The other factor is, you know, we have storage that we're, that we have now. We're using some of our well sites. We're using some of our well sites and abandoned retired well sites for storage. For example, all the best, Montgomery Best equipment is stored offsite, which proposes difficulties for us operations wise and obviously takes more staff time to travel across town. We've also got our seasonal things that we use that we store at our Blackberry Heights facility, which is a retired wellhouse. That again is additional staff time, which requires us to go across town. So again, I think the big thing to take into account too, when we look at the 2050 build is understanding that it's going to cost us on average, I believe, if I'm correct, Justin might go correct me on this. I think it was along the lines of four and a half percent increased cost per year that we pushed that at alternate two. So, you know, something to take into account as well. Do you build it now? And maybe yes, it's a little larger than what we need to start off with. But are we being financially responsible to build it now, considering we have the funds, than to pay increased costs later on?
I think Mark covered the two points quite well there. I mean, one of our things is that it would be, you know, more expensive to build in the future. And also while we don't have all the vehicles for it now, we do have other things that we could store and make use of in that space currently.
And we're assuming it's going to cost more to build in the future, correct?
We are assuming that, yes.
We, we're still going to have the existing Public Works facility for storage needs as well, correct?
Correct.
And sorry if you guys mentioned that I had an internet issue for about two or three minutes, but.
Correct, we'll still have the current facility. But one of the things we wanted to take into account, Steve, is the thought process. And this is a perfect board meeting to kind of have this discussion. We just talked about the alternate water source. So that's something that we wanted to keep in mind as well. So one of the things that we made sure that we did throughout this process was to not get in the mindset of still having that building, because the reality is, is someday we may not. So we don't want to hamstring ourselves either into a building that, you know, day one, if we decide to go to alternate source where we decommission our existing land softening plant, now we can't fit our additional water staff into that building and the vehicles and equipment that we need to do those operations. So that was a key thing and that was a tough call for us because we, again, you're correct. We're going to have this facility and kind of consider it an overflow, but there's no guarantee that we're going to continue to have it in the future. So something we wanted to be mindful of.
No, I get it and I appreciate that. I, I'm, as Trusty Guyer said, I agree with him. I'm okay with the two alternates being added in. I would rather build it now and then eventually grow into it, make sure we've got our space needs met for the future and extend that out. I want as much life out of this building as possible. And construction costs only go up over years. So I agree with Trusty Guyer.
Is this second space, alternate space, bid number two, is that walled off? Or is that just open space that we're going to have to heat even though we don't necessarily need it now?
So that's something that we'll more than likely get into in the next phase of the build. Right now, it's just conceptual. So that's something we haven't 100% gone over with Williams. But it is something that, they bring a great point there, Doug, that we could potentially, if they are envisioning something walled off, that we could in fact have that as an unheated seasonal storage space to start with and go that route. But I believe their current mindset and plan is that it would be open if we did the alternate two and there would not be a wall.
That's a lot of heat.
We can confirm that.
Out of that 15-2, how much of that is the old bond?
The 15-2 is all new money. The old bond is 1.7 million. So we would actually be issuing roughly $17 million in bonds. 15.2.
I guess here's my question. If it was all supposed to be paid off in 2040, or I mean, 2020, why, and that means we had the money until 2020. I know we saved 70,000 by re-bonding it, but instead we got another four years of it. I, I don't understand what happened to that money. If it's supposed, if we supposedly had the money in 2020 and now all of a sudden it's longer, I don't get that at all. I, I mean, all you're doing is kicking a can down the road. It's like buying a used car and saying, ah, well, wait longer to pay for it. Doesn't make sense.
We do have the money, but rather than pay, let's say, a thousand dollars in 2020 to pay it off, we'll pay $500 split over the next five years. So we end up paying less over time, even though we're stretching it out longer.
You going to do that with this one too, so where it's going to be longer? How long is this going to go? 20 years?
This is a 20-year bond.
I ain't going to be here in 20 years worried about it, I guess. But I do question the employees that our consultants used. I cannot understand. I agree with them, the town should be 35,000. But then he comes back with, well, these towns are, are at 35,000. And, but we're going to expand a little bit, but it ain't going to be that many. We're 77 miles, we may go to 90 miles, maybe 85 miles with new roads for a subdivision. But I cannot understand how we need 40 to 60. One time he mentioned 60, on paper it's 40. And yet the towns that he quoted on, like Arling or was a gonk one and some of them, they're at 38, 35 now. And they don't have 40 to 60. So how does he get that we need that many? When really, they don't have it and they're that big. I just, that's some question that, I agree right now, Mark could use a couple more guys right now. But I cannot see 40 to 60 guys down the road. My God, that everybody would have to have their own pickup truck or something. I don't know where they get that at. Maybe Mark can answer that question.
So I, I mean, I, I agree with you, Denny. It seems like a far stretch, but when you look at the services that we provide now and some of the things that we don't do as a preventative maintenance items now, when you look at those in the future and what they hold, I mean, a perfect example is for years I had always heard that everything west of the Boardroom Road is new and is low maintenance. Kind of hit that point now where we're, that's phasing out and the additional maintenance is starting to add up in those areas out west. So things of infrastructure nature, such as storm sewer and sanitary sewer. The other big items that we look at is our urban canopy. We look at the maturity of trees out in our western portion of town, which means huge increases in our pruning, our tree planting, our removals, but also in our leaf collection program and brush collection program. So again, those are things I think that we have to take into account. While we do a good job of replacing the infrastructure, we're always going to have that aging process that has occurred and it's going to continue to occur. Again, it's very well possible that we don't need that 40 to 60 range of employees. But I think, you know, we're not doing due diligence if we don't factor that in when they're again, using that as comparables with other communities that do have that. I think another thing to take into consideration is things that we could have in the future and they may, may out in left field a little bit, but things of the nature of a train station. And then when we look at these potential projects like what we discussed tonight with, you know, the Valley Doyle property and coming into play where maybe some of the things that he's referencing there, and again, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but maybe our downtown services is something, a new division of Public Works that has to be created to keep sidewalks clear for when there's wedding events and things of that nature. And again, there's got to be a balance of private versus public there. But again, we're trying to look at all those potentials and make sure that we're not short, short calling ourselves for the future in those types of.
The only thing I remember is like Carpenter'sville, they got big downtowns. I mean, they're like a Swiggo's downtown, say. I mean, they're not huge, but they're, they're big enough. And, and yet they have 30, 35 employees and they're the same size that we're going to get to. And I, to me, it just looks like an additional, too many. You guys weren't here on the board when I got into argument about buying a leaf thing. And the guys out at the other end said, well, we have little trees so we can put them in a paper bag and that's all we need. So why should we pay for that for you guys in the old? Well, now the old or the new out at West have a lot of leaves. So I can see having to leave things. But at the same time, our last Public Works Director said it took three weeks on pickup sticks and it takes three days. So it's a little different there too. You don't know who to believe, I guess, so. But I'm done, I'm done for the night, it's too late and the Bears are losing by at least 10, so I'm, I'm happy.
Thanks, Denny, I recorded it.
And Denny, it is, I'm glad that you commented on the comparables because it wouldn't be a staff study if you didn't comment on us being compared to any other community. So I kind of anticipated that. The, I appreciate the approach here. I mean, we're certainly not, we're building a facility that meets our future needs, but we're certainly not building a facility so that way we can buy trucks and hire 30 people next year. I mean, it's just not how it works. But I, you know, I like that they've converted some of the items to alternate. So we can design them out now, bid them and see, you know, if it fits our budget, you know, once we move things forward. My only concern tonight is with the schedule they light out, they laid out in there that would have us bonding for these funds later on this year. You know, eight or nine months before we pull the trigger on constructing it. It just feels like it's quick for us to commit to selling $15 million with the bonds based on a space needs analysis. They're going to be designing this facility. I see design development, schematic design, construction documents, starting, what is it, January through whatever. I just, my question for staff is, why do we need to, to consider bonding at our next board meeting? Why can that not be pushed to the first of the year?
Why we're looking at that, and we did talk about this at one of the last meetings was because of the refunding and being able to save money on, on our existing bonds. That's the reason that we were bringing up the bonds this early with the election here and next week. I mean, rates could change after that. I mean, we're not issuing bonds until the end of the year if we would go with the schedule. If the board so chose, we could push that back into 2021 and issue the bonds at a later date. This was just trying to get the bonds issued this year, get the refunding done and get the savings realized.
Did you mention previously at the last meeting that the rate for the bond happens at the date of the sale?
I can't, can you repeat that?
That the rate gets locked in on the date of the sale?
Yes.
Is that when the rate gets locked?
Yes.
So regardless of the election next week, we're not talking about selling bonds until December 14.
Correct.
A month and a half from now.
Yeah, I think, what's the real risk of pushing that off till we get schematic design or any further design on the project? What's our risk?
They're really, I mean, at this point, they're really.
It's the interest rate fluctuation.
I mean.
The interest rate could go up, could stay the same. What's it forecasted to do?
Well, based upon the Federal Reserve, they're keeping interest rates essentially zero until 2023. So municipal bond rates will go up and down between now and then, but I don't think it's going to go up by a large percentage.
Okay. Tom?
I'm at the moment struggling a little bit with the differentiation between alternate one and two and why we would potentially construct that alternate two with the enclosed space to house vehicles and equipment that we would typically have just under covered space. That seems backwards to me. It would seem to me that we would choose alternate one over alternate two and potentially for a short term, maybe have some equipment that we would like to have in enclosed spaced, under covered space versus the opposite. It seems like a bigger step than we need to take at this point to me, just, just in terms of the alternates. Additionally, with the bond sales, we, we know that those rates aren't going up 3% in the next six months. There's, there's, to me, there's no reason to do that bond issuance right now until we're through kind of, you know, schematic or C docks or get a real, real good number of what we really need for this project. The end of the day, if, if it's the board's discretion to, to really push forward, to go to 15 and leave a million uncovered, why wouldn't we just do the whole project at that point? I, I just think we're, we're kind of half in, half out. And I'm, I'm not sure what direction really that should, should push to. Again, not opposed, I think the process is good. I think staff has done their due diligence. I appreciate the work of Williams and the consultants and Justin's work and Rich and, and Mark. I, I think we're in a really good spot, but we kind of got to pick a path. To me, either we build for now with a little bit of headroom or we build the project. I, I do have some concern about how many, you know, how many hundreds of square feet will we have constructed and unoccupied for how many years? You know, we want to build some headroom in, but, but how much? There's municipal examples all around us of thousands of unoccupied square feet of space that were built with public dollars that are currently sitting, you know, being heated and cooled every year with nothing in them. And, and I don't want to be in that position for us. So, so I'm a little in the middle, quite frankly, at the moment on this. I mean, obviously, we need to do the project, but.
I hear you. Anybody else have any comments? Teresa, Steve, Dan?
Mark, we do have trucks and that in other buildings, don't we?
Correct. We currently are renting a facility that we use as what we kind of call our seasonal storage. So what we do is we kind of pack that, that unit with obviously the off-season equipment. So for example, right now, we're kind of in limbo because we've got our winter equipment out. So that storage space is not empty, but a little bit more wiggle room in there. But coming about a month and a half here, it'll be packed with all of our summer seasonal things such as lawn mowers and asphalt roller, arrow boards, all the leaf back equipment, once that's done and over with, gets packed in there. And so, yeah, we spend a lot of time shuffling things around.
All right. Anything else? I feel like we need to have more discussions on this, maybe as the plan gets further developed. You know, I see both sides of a lot of these issues. I mean, building a $2.4 million, you know, storage facility for us to park and store vehicles that it themselves cost multi-million dollars. I, I get that, but it's a balancing act. And, you know, I don't think we have enough information right now to make a decision on exactly how we want to phase the project just based on the space. a decision on exactly how we want to phase the project, just based on the space needs analysis. But I, I think we ought to release the architect if we haven't on the final design. Has the board approved that contract yet or how's that work?
No, we would bring that back to the meeting on November 9th for you.
Okay, so we can release them and kind of get periodic updates at the board level. When they're done with their schematic design, we can look at the site plan and phasing of things and see if we still like alternates. I mean, if they're in, if they're out, I don't know.
We would have them design it with the alternate, with the alternates presented, right? We talked about that at the last meeting.
At, at some point, we would need to make a decision. The board would need to make a decision. They usually would not, if, if something is not going to be built that at the end of say schematic design or design development, at some point they would not be spending any more money on that particular section or that particular alternate. So, but mass rate and we can, along the way, we can make those decisions.
And also design it with all the alternates and bid it that way and.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
We can decide down, we can decide down the road. We don't have to cut it off early.
We, we do budgets, I know at Twin Oaks, we do budgets on schematic design, design development and kind of through the process. And a lot of times I'm looking at projects four or five times and then we can see what these alternates are. And as we're going into, you know, later this year and the beginning of next year, maybe we do get a better price. Maybe it is, the base project total is less because, you know, the, the, the work is starting to shrink up a little bit out, out in, in the construction side. So it, it's not gonna hurt to, to put it out, put it out to bid, find out what we've got and then we can start making decisions.
Based on what I've heard here, we would bring back the agreement with the architects to move forward with the next phase and redesign the timeline for the bonds to push that into the new year.
And I would love to see that vehicle analysis, if I only knew what you have, how many spots there are for footers that we need for truck storage currently versus what we're building. So we can actually make an informed decision. Does it look like, and again, with that being open space that we're gonna be heating to store vehicles that are maybe seasonal? It would just be nice to have an informed decision before we make that call.
Yeah, and I know we got a presentation on the space needs analysis, but is the board going to be approving that report when it's final?
And bring it back for approval, I think that was the final.
It's just acceptance, right? It's not necessarily an approval of, we just accept that the findings from the.
Right. All right.
Yeah, there was a fleet tabulation in that, in that draft too, where they went through and, and discussed current vehicles and, and needs analysis as far as space and projections.
But they also had us at 60 employees. So now I questioning the 50 trucks that they're saying we might need as well.
Well, it's good to question that stuff, that's why we're here to take a look at it, so. All right, any staff, do you need anything else? Jeff, Justin, Mark?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Good.
All right, thanks for your help on this, appreciate it. All right, moving along, I think that's about it. Anything new or unfinished?
I have one. I just want to take a second to recognize staff and all the work, like we've got a lot of stuff going on right now. And I really feel like the board's been working with everybody and Rich with the community development with working on the Graysmill project, the worst kitchen. And there's been a lot of balls in the air for a lot of years. And I feel like pieces are starting to fall into place and I just want to recognize and acknowledge staff and all of the work that they put in day in, day out to make it all happen for us. It's sometimes it, as Rich and I discussed, sometimes it takes a lot longer than you hope. But it is nice when you start to see the pieces fall in place. So I just want to say thank you to staff in general for all the hard work and all.
I agree.
Yes, and I guess I should apologize for almost a four hour meeting tonight. We certainly try not to do that, but a bunch of items just hit tonight that were pretty important that we didn't want to punt on, so we kept them all in the meeting. But I appreciate your time tonight, so. Anything else?
Real quick, Mark, can we have a, can we get a list of all the surplus property we sold? How much you got for it? I don't think we've seen one in a long time.
The vehicles and equipment?
Oh, the surplus, yeah. There's a lot of them we haven't sold yet because we haven't replaced a lot of those items. But I'll get you what we have to date. Want for this, your fiscal year.
All right. You can see future meetings there, village board, two weeks from tonight, Monday, November 9th at 7:00 PM. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. So we do have a separate link for the board to click on to discuss the acquisition of real property pursuant to five ILCS 120 over 2C5. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All right, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Definitely.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And Trustee Lee?
Yes.
He may do the executive session link this evening. So you should have gotten it just after 6 o'clock. And I will start that now.
All right, see you in a few seconds.